Eddie, when you are.
All right, here we go. All right, call the Osseo City Council regular meeting to order here for Monday, April 14th at 7:00 PM. Roll call, looks like all members are with us this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to apply to the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Look for motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve tonight's agendas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number five, consent agenda. Any questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve tonight's consent agendas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, next, matters from the floor. Any wish and speak, please step forward, state your name and address and address the council or matter you wish. General attempt to not answer your questions will consider those at future council meetings. There any matters on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I do have two letters if there's no other matters from the floor.
Okay. No matters for, okay, go ahead, read them.
This is addressed to Osseo City Hall and Osseo City Council. This is in reference to Macona Auto Sales concerns. R&amp;W Welding and Machine, Inc. are sending our concerns about the issue with Macona Auto Sales due to the County Road 81 service road and the congestion and poor visibility for incoming and outgoing traffic. We have seen numerous close calls due to so many vehicles being parked along the road. R&amp;W is located down the service road between McDonald's and the pawn shop. We have trucks delivering steel and parts every day. Macona has had cars parked this far down the service road, and it makes it very hard or impossible for the delivery trucks to get into or out of our parking lot. We have noticed a few times that when we wanted to go down the service road to the other end, the road was completely blocked with cars and tow trucks. We had on occasion had to go out onto County Road 81 and come in the other end of the service road to get to where we needed to go. We're pretty sure we are not the only business that this has affected. Thank you for your consideration. R&amp;W Welding and Machine, Inc., Michael Rooney, Dustin Rooney, and Brett Rotz. The second letter, this is from Northern Tractor and Equipment. Says, "To Osseo City Mayor and Councilmembers, Dwayne Poppy, Mark Cook, Mark Schultz, and Nick Torres." This is from Doug Quaid, owner of Northern Tractor and Equipment, 335 County Road 81, Osseo, Minnesota, 55369. This is in reference to Macona Auto Sales, 337 County Road 81, Osseo, Minnesota, 55369. Per suggested, I'm writing concerns I have in regards to the aforementioned business. As my letterhead reflects, my dad and I have been in business, a business owner in Osseo, for almost 60 years. Many businesses have come and gone during this time. I have never witnessed such disregard for the town's rules, regulations, and common courtesies. Here's a list of some of my concerns. There have been up to 20 cars and pickups parked on the service road, many inoperable. This makes it difficult for businesses to receive deliveries due to lack of road space. Macona often parks on both sides of the service road, resulting in hazardous driving space for traffic. Many vehicles parked on the service road do not have current license tabs. These vehicles are leaking harmful contaminants such as antifreeze, oil, et cetera, onto the service road. These vehicles leave behind miscellaneous trash on the service road. I end up picking up much of their trash, so as not to reflect poorly on our area. Macona uses the service road as an extension to their business. Macona employees will provide mechanical services to these vehicles as they are parked on the service road. They will also show the cars to potential buyers while they are parked on the service road. I have witnessed the employees making U-turns anywhere on the service road. This poses a safety concern for pedestrians and other drivers on the service road. In my opinion, the cars parked on the service road create a safety hazard for the employees, patrons, pedestrians, and people driving and plowing around the cars. Thank you for your time and consideration, Doug Quaid, Northern Tractor and Equipment Company.
Yes, Councilmember Mertie.
Mayor, Council, I would suggest, since there will be a public hearing on this conditional use permit tonight, that those letters be mentioned and incorporated into the record as part of the public hearing. We don't need to reread the letters, but I think it would be important to make sure that those are part of the, part of the record of the city council's discussion on this item.
Okay.
Kenny Nelson, 509 Third Avenue, Northeast Osseo, Minnesota. I'd just like to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, and everyone else who volunteered to make a really great Easter egg hunt on Saturday. I don't know who was responsible for the weather, but somebody give them a bonus. So, thank you. Again, it's great to have such a great community where we can have such great events. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is this the time to comment on the Macona CUP?
No, that'll be during the public hearing.
Thank you.
So, this is just other matters on the floor right now. Yep. Any other matters on the floor? All right, matters for now closed, moving on. Seven, Special Business 7A, 150th Celebration Update from Carol Larson and complete team, it looks like here, so. And of course, our esteemed representative.
First of all, I'm Carol Larson. As you all know, Osseo 150th Celebration. I'd like to introduce you to our State Representative, Hulda Mamanya Hiltzlee. And she has been so good about helping us in various things, particularly our 150th. We ended up on the floor of the House, their full floor, standing up individually, being honored, her doing it. She's shepherded a bill through for us, and I think she's working on one for you, too. So, I'm just gonna let her talk, and when she's finished, she can go home, because her children are with her, and they've been so good about this.
So much. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Administrator, and all the city residents of Osseo. I am Hulda Hiltzlee, Representative for this district. And it's always an honor to come in here and talk about all the amazing things that are happening at the Capitol, really fighting really hard to try to get some of those resources here to Osseo. And one of the things that Carol talked about is making sure that the celebration for the 150th year celebration, they have enough funding to really put on a great show this year, as they have continued to put on a couple of events throughout the year. So, please look out for their emails, their communications, and come and celebrate Osseo. So, the specific bill that we are talking about, when I was thinking about, what does resources look like? So, I authored a bill that would appropriate about $80,000, you know, with communication with Carol and her team in terms of what those funds would look like and what they would be used for. So, right now, you know, we had a hearing on it. In the next steps, right now, we are trying to fight that it stays on the omnibus bill for the legacy bill. And that means it's gonna have to go and get debated between now the House and the Senate, the conference committees. And so, right now, it's out of my hands, but what we can do as a city, please reach out to, you know, I can probably send some information to Carol to pass out, to reach out to the legislators who are actually at the table to debate whether or not the bill continues to move through the process. So, that's going on. We are doing a couple of things with the City Administrator. You know, one of the bills is looking at providing funding for youths, youth programming. And then also, we've had many conversations around making sure that we do have funding to renovate this whole entire building, right? This is an old building, and so we want to make sure that we do get funding that can make that happen. And then, other, other, other items that we are working on. Today was about the 150th celebration. And then also on the floor, we did acknowledge the former Minority Leader, Bill Schreiber. Yes, we did acknowledge him, and he was definitely well-loved leader of the House. And so, that was really special for me. And then lastly, we acknowledged Osseo High School's 100th anniversary as well. So, a lot of things that happened on the Capitol, I just wanted to come on here and give you guys an update, and please reach out to me. There's an idea or something that you guys really want to see happen on the Capitol, let me know. Lastly, there's a bill that I'm working with, the City of Osseo, the City of Brooklyn Park, New Hope, Robbinsdale, basically the northwest suburbs in regards to the police department, and making sure that our law enforcement have a resource center. They call it a real-time crime center, and I thought about Osseo. So, I need to connect with the Chief of Police here. Yes, the Administrator, everything, all the above, to kind of look at if that would be something that would be a benefit for the City of Osseo, to be a part of that collaboration, because they are trying to create a real-time crime center where they can collaborate and in terms of, you know, addressing crime within the northwest suburbs. So, that's in the works. I'll reach out to Mr. Shane, Chief Shane, about that. With that, thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Alicia, for your time, and I'm always happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Well, I have to say, just as an aside and to give Hulda a lot of credit, we got this bill out of the Legacy Committee, and it was strictly due to her. It was a last-minute thing. She called me on the phone cold. I think Alicia, she must have called City Hall, and you whipped her over to me. And she called and said, you know, we've got to get a bill through for Osseo. And she, the reason was, she, there's another city that is also celebrating a 150th anniversary. And she said, if they can do it, Osseo can do it. So, that was the deal. And she gave you an update on that. So, I'm here to tell you about the 150th Celebration, month-by-month-by-month things. April, we had a really good potato bake bar and potato bake dinner, and then bake sale. And it was a real success. And I just have to credit the entire committee. There were volunteers that just worked their little, their heads off to get that a success that it was. The other things in April that we're doing are, now that the summer, that the spring sports events are out, we're having our table, our merchandise table promoting us is going to be at whatever sport events we can get. And Saturday, I call them, well, their Team Schneider, Ken and Ann, they have the table. They went to the lacrosse game, which was canceled, saw that the softball game was in, so they moved their stuff over there, and they sold things, and people were talking about it. So, that's good. That's going to be going on till through the spring sports season. The EDA breakfast is Thursday at 7:30 at the Community Center, and we'll have a table there, and so we'll see our business community, so that'll be fun. In May, there's the, it's on, it's in your packet, there's the car show and the Brooklyn Park Tater Days, a continuation of the high school sports events, and then, and all of those will be having tables and will be, have a, have a presence. Tater Days, I, I think we're going to be biding in Tater Days, not sure. There are other parades coming up, and I can't keep track of them. That's Ann's bailiwick. She gets, she has to get permits for us to be there. The, another thing in May that they're doing is they're starting a historic walking tour, and you can, the webs, our website is Osseo Min, M-N, 150th dot com. And you can get all kinds of information on that, of activities that are coming up, including that, that historic walking tour. In June, we've got the Maple Grove Chalk Fest that, actually, James Holken from the Osseo Maple Grove Legion, he's connected with that, and he told us way last year, he said, make sure you're there, get a table. So, we're checking in with him as we get closer to that. And then, of course, there's Father, there's Father Hennepin Days in Champlin. We're going to be at, they have a one-room school up there that they have open house for during that time, and we'll be there. Don't know if we'll be in the parade, I haven't gotten that far. But the other big item in June is the Jefferson, the motorcycle ride for Jefferson Highway. There's a, one of the parts of the Legion are the Legion riders, and they are going to coordinate a motorcycle run on Saturday, the 21st of June, at 10:30. And from what I hear, it's gonna be pretty interesting. We'll certainly be contacting City to coordinate, they do that. I don't know, they, they, they have guard riders that close off the roads as they go on. They're expecting 200 motorcycles. It's gonna be interesting, and we're gonna have flags on Central Avenue, they're gonna get to the businesses. They've done this type of thing before, so they sort of know what they're doing. And Lisa Sundberg and I are communicating on that. And then, after that, they're going to have some events at the Legion that continue that day. So, we're sort of a part of what they're doing, but it's interesting. July is basically, if you look at the list, there's Maple Grove Days, there's garden tours throughout Osseo, we've got the farmer's market that'll go through September, and we have two, two tables there. One table is just promoting Osseo, and, but the table next to it, we can actually sell merchandise right along with the vendors. Then on, one of the things in July that, that's really big, we went last year, and I was amazed at how many people, they were buying those books from the 100th anniversary. I mean, I bet if we sold one, we probably sold 10 of them. And so, this year, we'll have our own book and all kinds of other things. We've got another run of T-shirts, we've got lightweight sweatshirts, we've got books, we've got caps, we've got other things that we're working on. In August, Night to Unite, which was really good last year, there was a lot of exposure there. And then, the business partnerships, they're still planning. We just got a call today that some of the downtown businesses, they want to get together, and they want to really start doing something, so, and to coordinate with us. So, we'll see how it goes, but August is a perfect time, because it's a busy time. And we, they, you know, whatever we can work out with them, we're gonna do it. Again, garden tours throughout Osseo. And then, I think the History Committee, or are you, whatever, is it Committee?
Historical Preservation.
I can never remember which. They're working on possibly a pop-up museum and trying to figure out a spot for that. And Maple Grove was aware of that. About a third of the things that Maple Grove have in their museum are from Osseo. And so, they know that we're doing this, and they say, well, let us know, let us know when you want some of the stuff, and they'll bring it in, and, and we'll do it. So, they're really good about helping. And then, of course, September is the commemorative ceremony that we have. We're working, I think the Lions this week are going to make a final decision on where they want that to be. Originally, we were going to have it at, right where they have, on Third Street, where they have all the other activities. And then, they started thinking, well, this is sort of a different kind of a thing, because if we have all of our public officials there, and we have some music, they, the band, and some of these other things, that it would be, it takes away from what the Lions are doing there, because this is a huge fundraiser for them. So, they're, they're, I think their board is meeting on a Thursday, it might be next Thursday, and they're going to finalize where they feel it would best be. So, that's it. The book, today, we finished the last section of the last chapter for us reviewing it. Now, it goes to pagination, and Ken and Ann and I have to sit with this huge TV and read every page to verify that it's what we want it to be, and there are over 350 pages. So, it's gonna be a challenge. But we'll get it done, we'll get it done, and it'll be good. It's, because literally, it's the first time that there is really a history of the City of Osseo in one spot. So, that's where we are. Anybody have any questions?
Council questions?
I don't have a question, I would like to make a comment. Thank you. I mean, just from the bottom of our hearts, thank you to all of you that are sitting in here that have put in countless hours of work. And I know the paychecks you're receiving are huge for all of your time. But just, just thank you for all of the work that you guys are doing and picking this up and running with it, the way you guys have done is, is nothing short of amazing. And the, the all-encompassing aspect of what you guys have done, I mean, you really truly have come at this thing from every angle possible to make sure that everybody's been included, even some of those businesses that are owned by people that aren't really good at getting back to you right away and doing things. But you've always made, you've always been patient to make sure that those things are included. And so, I'm just, just, I mean, I'm behalf, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I, I mean, I just, the amount of gratitude that we have for what you guys are doing to make this year such a special year is just off the charts. So, just thank you so, so much for everything that you guys are doing.
Well, in response to that, is, you've been our foundation. And if you hadn't have been there smiling and saying, yeah, go for it, go for it, it would have made a difference. So, we appreciate that tremendously. So, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor? Yep.
Okay.
Couldn't say it any better. Ditto, absolutely.
Thank you all, very, very much.
Yeah, thank you for everything in the committee. Appreciate it, thank you. All right, 7B, swearing and ceremony of Officer Katie Harris.
Where is she?
Hiding in the back.
She's nervous on what I'm gonna say. So, on February 26 of 2024, Officer Harris was hired with our police department and started that day. And I would like to just, you know, everything she's done has brightened our room with kitty cats and sunshine, and Katie's been a great addition to our, our police department. Right away, she gelled with everyone, and, you know, even though she doesn't like day shift and can't get up in the morning or doesn't like it, because you don't ever want to run into Katie when she starts at 6:00 AM. But, no, our, our police department is, is, I would say, with this hire, a better police department than we were before. She does a great job. She's taken over many different roles within our department. She's doing our car seats now. We're gonna be moving forward with, with some other duties that, that Katie really enjoys. So, we just, it's been nothing but great having her here. She flew through FTO, made it out on her own, thank you Brett. He did all the work, and Todd, the two of them, because that's kind of, this was, became a little volatile when I became the City Administrator, and that was during her FTO period. So, I kind of had to step away, and Todd and Brett did all the work. But, like I said, I think this was a great hire. She's done great things within our department. Her family should be proud of what she's been able to accomplish. Like she said, it's her first big-girl job, so it's, it's great. And I think everyone was, was really happy. I mean, I can't say enough about her. So, what I'd like to do tonight is just have Mary come up, and we can do the oath. And then, I think it's her mother, is that right? Who's gonna come up and pin the badge on. So, why don't you stand out front here?
Aye, Dr. Harris.
Aye, Captain Harris.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And to faithfully discharge the duties.
And to faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a police officer of the City of Osseo, Minnesota.
Of a police officer of the City of Osseo, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So, help me out.
Help me out.
Congratulations.
I would like to have Mom come on up. And you have her badge, right?
So, go ahead, you stand right here. I'm gonna get out of your way. Just be very careful. No, just kidding. Come on up, Officer Katie, and take some pictures, and then we'll have you with the council, and then we'll get some of the officers. Everybody.
Rocco, get in there. Rocco, go. Give me your phone. I don't know how to take pictures with that phone. Whoa. Jeez. Get out. Woo! It's good, okay.
All right. Thank you, family. Counsel, can we get a picture of you kids?
Rocco's gonna stay in there. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm not counsel. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your dead center. Little guy's on you. All right. Good? Can we bring your pictures? Perfect. I'll wait. We gotta get some more. Come on, helicopters. Anybody here that's in our picture? She's got a badge. Yeah, Rocco.
Do I find the window?
I ain't gonna rub her back.
Yes, it's mine.
Feels good. Cool.
Just one thing before we, we end our swearing-in ceremony. Now, this is very ceremonial for law enforcement, and it just shows that, I mean, people had to step back to take pictures for all the law enforcement officers that showed up for, for Katie and her swearing-in and all the family, and that, that is the support that every officer needs, is their compatriots. There's other cities, other counties here, not just Osseo. So, this is a cool thing that we do for law enforcement. But I want to commend the family for being here, because it's tough having a cop in the family. It's really difficult. But we do appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Yeah, if the family wants to get up and leave, feel free. You don't have to stick around. We'll, we'll, we'll wait, we'll wait till you leave.
Just remember, she was back.
You're welcome, you're welcome to stay, but.
We're not kicking you out, but.
She was backgrounded, so they all had their say, so.
All right, moving on, number eight, public hearings. 8A, conditional use permit revocation on 337 County Road 81. Assistant Vickerman.
This is mine, actually.
Oh, you're taking it? Okay.
Would you like me, would you like to open it and then have me do my spiel, or do you want me to do my spiel and then open the public media?
Mayor, go ahead.
Mayor and Council, I would have, if there's staff, a presentation of some kind, do that first, and then open the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. So, we're here for the conditional use permit or to discuss the revocation of a conditional use permit at 337 County Road 81. The Osseo Police Department has spent many hours in staff time over the past year dealing with many violations at 337 County Road 81. Since April of 2024, we received numerous complaints from citizens and neighboring business owners. Complaints have ranged from parking to garbage in the back of the business. If you look here, you can see where I, I think. If you look here, you can see where, I think one of those is a video, if you can click on it. Or both of those are videos, I believe. Do they work? Yep. So here's what, when we first started to look at the CUP violations, I went over and that was in the front of the business. And if you hit the other one, it'll show you kind of what was going on in the back of the business. And you can see as I'm walking through here that there are many, many cars. The conditional use permit says 12 cars max. There's garbage, there's things strewn everywhere. In that back garage, there was actual car painting, which isn't part of the CUP. You can see that that's when I started to, we started to look at this business. That would be probably in April-ish of, early April of 2024. And you can just see from the body cam video that I walked back here, like that painting's not allowed. One of the big issues was all the stuff in the back portion of the business. You can see all the cars and stuff that were left there. And there's a memorandum in your packet that will kind of lay. Is out, all of service, whether it's cars parked on the County Road 81 service road. To conditional use permit violations where there were many, many violations. We ended up citing this business seven different times. And nothing really started to change. This was in, there's some pictures of the first time I was there and what it looked like back there in the back of the business. You can go to the next one. Here are some. This is February 21st of violations there. That was right before the planning commission took this on. And the planning commission, we went there on March 17th in the Osseo Planning Commission meeting. The owner was there of Macona. He said he wanted to work with the city to resolve these issues. The Osseo Planning Commission met, found that they would recommend the CUP for 337 County Road 81 be revoked. And then if you can go further down. So this was also February 21st. You can see the parking on County Road 81. Now, I'd already had multiple conversations with the owner, Mr. Kane from Macona Auto Sales, next one. And this was just on March 17th of 2025. And these were from 48, so just before this meeting. And the, the issue I'm trying to show is they've been under pressure to, to look at their business and to their CUP. And they were fully aware, the Osseo Planning Commission already recommended that this business be revoked. And we still issued another citation. I think it was on the 8th of April, another citation for too many vehicles in the CUP. And so that's why when, when we sat down, we did have a sit down meeting with his attorney and Mr. Kane. And we talked about, you know, you got to start complying to what this current CUP is. And then if you're able to comply with that, then we can probably move forward with it, you know, maybe an amended one if it doesn't work for your business. Before the planning commission meeting, we had that meeting, but I told them I was still moving forward. After that meeting, I started really looking into the business and seeing what else was there. And there's in that back garage, there's a poster, a, I guess, a business sign. There's someone else using that address for their car sales license. And I was able to find that out. I can't share that because it's private data. But there is a, a car sales, their, their sales license list to that address. Because you have to have a physical address with the state of Minnesota to sell cars. You can't just do it at your house. You can't do it at, out on, just a P O box. So that's used there. We didn't know that until I was able to get back there and saw the sign and I started doing some research. We also found there's another business which ends up being a towing business, which I think there's some, there were some pictures of the tow truck. That is also using that business address. We've had a couple of phone calls, just, or one phone call on what to do to get a CUP for another business. But until we resolve this, it'd be very difficult and I don't think we would approve it. But we would bring it forward at least. That wouldn't be the recommendation of staff to have two car sales business on the same, same lot or same property. So. And so we, we were not aware of those other businesses working there. I have also spoken to the landowner. They did give us a call. I did send a letter before this meeting to the landowner. And we had a long conversation about just what would happen and, and talked about what could happen. So they are aware. I'm not sure if they're here tonight because I haven't met them in person. So what we're asking the city council is to consider my recommendation, just with the amount of staff time and the amount of time it's taken us to try to get the business under control and within the CUP that we revoke the conditional use permit at 337 County Road 81.
All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing now.
Motion, open the public hearing.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres, I believe, that was. Any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, all those, motion passes four zero. The public hearing is now open at 7:36. So if anyone would like to approach the mic and state your, your opinion or position, please step forward. Now would be the time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Can we recognize the two letters that I read earlier?
Yep, yes.
On the record?
Yep.
Thank you.
Your honor, members of the council, city attorney, Ms. Vickerman. I, my name is Richard Escali. I'm an attorney. I represent Macona and Milton Kind, the, the owner of the business. We are asking the council to reject the, the suggestion of staff to revoke the CUP. I want to start out by indicating that my client has been aware of this for now, for some time, is making efforts to try to fix it. We, he's been cited. I want to give a little history of what's happened with, with the code violations. Mr. Mickelson's right. They've had, there are seven code violations. I've dealt with the city attorney on those code violations. We reached a resolution a few weeks ago, actually two weeks ago, where there was one, one admission guilty plea to one of the violations. The other six were done by what's called a stay of adjudication, which means that there was a guilty plea. But the court with the agreement of the city attorney stayed the conviction based upon the fact that my client now will be on probation for one year for more, no more further violations. I, I bring that up to begin with to let you know that he is under the gun from a legal standpoint. Because he, if any more code violations that are proven, he would automatically have six more convictions for the six that have been stay, stay adjudication. So he is under the gun to clean this up. I would also want to point out that I would like, I've inquired of Ms. Vickerman to have a meeting. She indicated that she wanted to speak with Mr. Mickelson and, but I'd like, we'd like to have a meeting to try to work out a situation where we can amend the, the conditional use permit to allow the business to continue. If, if the council grants the suggestion of staff to revoke the CUP, my client would be out of business and he would lose his livelihood. He really would like to work with the city and try to work out a situation where the problems would, would not happen anymore. And we'd like to, again, meet with the, Ms. Vickerman and try to work out all suggestions for what we have as amended CUP. There have been many situations here where there have been, where there's been some violations. My client has made, taken some steps to correct that. He has dismissed at least one or two employees that have, have their, with respect to the cars in the street. It's my understanding that those cars are dumped there without my client even knowing about them. The tow trucks come in, they put them there. He doesn't even know about them. He's had cars towed from there. He's even had cars towed from his owned lot recently because of, it exceeded the amount. He's, he's making efforts to try to comply. I don't, I believe, my understanding is that the, the, what he would call the garbage situation has been cleaned up. That that's, 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 he's working on that also. And that he would like another chance to move forward to try to amend his CUP, to allow for more parking and to allow him to stay in business. It would be very devastating to him and his business at this point to have it, the CUP revoked, he would not be able to, 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 to function anymore. The April 8th incident that I, I just learned about today, I didn't, just now, I didn't realize that that had happened. I'm not sure exactly what that consists of, but I know that my client has made great efforts to try to clean up the situation to allow him to continue the business. It's, it's been an issue. It's been a problem. He's been cited, like I said, seven times. We, we've dealt with those seven violations. We reached a resolution with the city attorney on those and with, with the understanding, hopefully we can move forward with, with him keeping his business. And so I would like to ask the council if anyone has any questions about what's, what's happened and what, what, what Mr. Mickelson has pointed out. Be free to answer any questions that you may have.
Council questions? Mr. Mayor, so thank you for coming in. You mentioned seven violations. I'm looking at a packet that has at least 25 violations. Can you explain that?
Well, I know, I guess I could only, maybe that might be an internal thing. I can only explain that he's actually received seven violations where he was charged with, with a ticket. Went to court, they opened up, opened up court files. There were seven of them and we dealt with them all at once. If there's additional, what I would call violation, it might've been internal that perhaps the police or staff has cited it did not reach the stage where they would become a, a citation or code violation, which would, which would bring it to a court action. So I'm not aware of that. I, I certainly not going to question what you're saying. I'm just not aware of that in terms of reaching a point where it went to the district court and we had to deal with, with the city prosecutor to resolve those, those, what do you call tickets.
Yeah, so I mean, just since we're on the record.
Sure.
And to keep the record clear.
Sure.
What I would recommend is taking a look at the packet, which is publicly available on the website.
Councilmember Torres, can I interrupt? I, I, though, there's seven CUP violations, but then there's a ton of parking and vehicle stuff that goes towards the vehicle, not the conditional use permit.
Gotcha.
That's the difference, but there is several citations that were written, or that were written. And, and again, now we have eight because we had an eighth on, on April 8th with an actual conditional use permit violation.
So does that trigger the other seven as he just mentioned?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I.
He, he said if he had one more, that would trigger the other seven. So is that's what's.
Yeah, if he's, if it's a conviction, yes. I mean, they still have their day in court. A citation was issued on the 8th and that probably won't go to court for a couple of months is my guess. But yes, if that is a conviction, then yes, those other seven would, or six that were stayed would come onto the record.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
Your honor, and again, I would, I'd verify that. I'm, like I said, I was not aware of that eight, ticket from April 8th till just tonight. If, if in fact, there was a code violation and it goes to court and there's a conviction and it would, it would trigger the other six. Yes, he's on probation for those. Well, it's not probation. It's a stay of adjudication, which, which would, would make those automatic guilty pleas.
So the concern that I have though, obviously is, okay, so we're talking CUP violations versus good old fashioned tickets, right? If I'm a neighbor, I don't care what the title of the thing is that's going wrong. I care that somebody's doing something that they shouldn't be doing. Citation, 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 right? So I heard during your summation, you know, that something is going to be done or working on it. I'd like to know kind of, like more details as to the plan. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this and when I read this last night, I was like, wow. I mean, we're talking about tires, vermin, we're talking about an eyesore, we're talking, I mean, how, and this is not legal advice, but why a neighbor wouldn't start going after somebody who's doing this for nuisance? I mean, if there's, if I've ever seen a case of, you know, I don't know. Again, I have to be careful.
I understand.
Getting into the legalities of nuisance. But I just, I guess I would personally like to hear what's the plan?
First of all, I guess I would like to, I'd like to know the dates of those complaints, if they're preexisting to March 17th, preexisting to February. And when I say that, and again, I haven't seen what those complaints were, if it's parking, if it's parking on the street, like with, without a license plate. I don't think my client has any control over that. If that's what the ticket was for. I'm not sure when you say tickets, I'm not, again, Chief Mickelson said parking. If, if, or no license plate, no registration. I don't think the conditional use permit deals with no parking on the street from what I, from my, my understanding of, of the conditional use permit.
Right.
Again, I would like, I, I got involved in this late. I was not involved in this late, early last year. I like, I got involved like late last year, November, September, maybe October. And I, I, my client is telling me that he's fired one or two employees, that he's trying to educate his employees. He gets, one of the troubles that he has is some of these people that come to him, they, they dump their car at night. My guy doesn't know about it. And I'm not, I'm not trying to make an excuse, but that, I'm just trying to explain how some of this stuff develops. I've, I've been told by my client that they're, they're working on it. My understanding is the garbage has been cleaned up, if there's been garbage in the past. Again, maybe the chief can speak to that. So the, the plan would be to, and I've, I've talked to my clients about this, my client about this. You cannot have the tires, you can't have the garbage. You got to comply with, with the 12 spaces. I'm, I'm, I'm told that they're have or they're trying. I'm not out there, so I don't know. So that's, that is the plan. I've, I've talked to them about it and so I'm hopeful they would comply. But I, they want a chance to do that and they also would like a chance to amend the CUP. I think they do need more parking for their business and I think they underestimated how busy they would be. And so they would like to try to at least amend the CUP so that they can have more parking because the government, more business come in, they're more busy than they thought. Again, not making an excuse, but I think trying to explain what, why this has happened.
So. I don't know. So I'm, I'm looking at just one page of this. We got 17 cars, 14 cars, 15 cars, 13 cars, 13 cars, 16 cars. This is all just on one page. I haven't even gone, I'm not even reciting from the, from the four pages. This is going back to, you know, only go, going back to last August. So let me take a step back. I am very, very pro small business and I get it. It can be very difficult, right? But you still, rules are rules. You have to do what you have to do and there's a reason for the rules. I mean, I think most concerning to me isn't so much that there's too many cars, right, inside of the lot. Obviously that's something that can be revisited, right? It's what I saw in the video. I see a, I see a wide open paint shed. And I don't know if anybody else noticed this, but I looked at the vehicles that were outside of that. And I don't know if it was dirt or mud, but it sure looked like paint splatter. Well, that means that stuff's going in the air. That means that stuff's going in the atmosphere and it's not even a part of their CUP from what I understand, right? So again, I'm, as much as I want to support small business and local business, I also have to support the businesses around them, right? And that's why I keep, my head keeps going back to this nuisance thing. And I don't know, in fairness, you said there's a plan, but what I heard is we're going to do something about it. That to me is not a definitive, these are the steps, A, B, C, D, and E, that we are going to take to rectify this. The other concern is I has, this isn't something new that's just happening within, you know, a month, two months. This is, you know, we're coming up on half a year or better, right? I just, I think before I, as a council member, can start to think about adjusting a CUP to keep the business going forward, I need to hear some very concrete, these are the exact steps that we are going to take. This is exactly the timeframe that we are going to do them in. And this is the way that we're going to make sure that we continue to have compliance. Because it's one thing to give, you know, we can change the CUP. But actions, there are so many problems here that are above and beyond just having too many vehicles on the property, right? So at, at this point, I'm going to pause and let my other council members speak, but.
May I respond briefly?
Absolutely.
Again, I, I don't know when those all took place. Clearly up through September, October, that a lot of stuff was going on. I got involved. I still think some things happened after that, but I, I made it clear to the client and that he needs to do, to take the steps to educate his employees. They, they started to tow, tow cars. They have cleaned up the. They can, they started to tow, tow cars, um, they have cleaned up the garbage, my understanding, so I think steps have been taken. Again, I'm not there all the time, I can't guarantee it's been done, but I have tried to explain to them what they need to do, and I was told that they were gonna take steps to do it. So, that's how I would respond to that, and I understand your concern, but I, I, I do think that, uh, he understands it has to be done, and he, he does need more parking. And you'd like to, you would, you would like to amend, because he's busy, he would like to amend the CUP to provide for more additional parking. Whether that's possible or not, I don't know, but he, they would like the chance at least to, to show that they can do it.
One quick question, Mr. Mayor, so, eh, can you give us a real high level, and I apologize for not asking earlier than the meeting, but can you give us a high level of what the CUP violation was on the eighth?
Was thirteen cars, but if you, can you pull up the last couple? The screen for me is bad, but if you can pull up the last couple slides.
Were there also issues with like the tires and the grass and the mice and all this stuff?
There are those, yes.
On the eighth?
On the eighth, I can show you, it's at night, so it's hard to see, but if you can pull up the la, either the second to the last or the last slide, please. They're the night ones, if you can click through. Keep going, yep, keep going. So if you can see right here in this right picture, you can see that trailer with all the trash on it. That's outside of the, that's also a conditional use permit violation, because they're supposed to have a dumpster. And they have one, but it's over full, and then they flow it onto that. Well, that's also a tires and garbage, and none of that's supposed to be out. It's supposed to be screened, it's not, it's, it's, that is something you can see. Especially for some of our businesses that are next door, they just look at that all day. And that's, that's part of the issue, did they clean up the back, yes and no. When we were there in March, a couple of the same, uh, vehicles that were, um, in the original photo, I think it was a moving van or something, like it had no tabs on it, it wasn't up and registered. Uh, that was, that when we went back, it was still there. I mean, we're, we're seeing these consistent problems even after having conversations, after writing citations, after having several meetings. I've met, uh, with Mr. Kind several times, and, um, and when I say several, I would say over probably six, five, six times. I've met with him personally, and I've told him what to do, I've met with his attorney and him, and it's still going on, even now, like I said, I'm just trying to reiterate, even now, they knew this was coming to council, they knew that this was an issue, they've known that the planning commission said this, we want it to be revoked, and they still couldn't stay within the CUP. And my issue is, is I would like to trust somebody to stay within their CUP, even if they amended it. But with that continual behavior and causing problems, as we've read a couple of letters from local business owners, it's not changing to where it needs to be to conform currently. So when we're talking nuisance, this, we could have cited for the nuisance too, we didn't. That's, that's an individual officer purview, that's not my purview, you know, I don't tell them what to write citations for. But, um, that's something that an individual officer, and, and if you ever want to talk to the officer that's writing most of these citations, he's sitting in the back of the room here, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Yep.
Add just a little bit more before I pass it on. Okay, so, a couple of points. If I was standing in your shoes, I'm just offering this as opinion, it's all it is, it's opinion, if I were standing in your shoes, I would be consulting your client and just digging down to find out what is the foundational issue, right? I, I'm going to imagine, and I'm, I'm going to, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it that this is not malicious, right? I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume positive intent, okay? So I'll start from assuming positive intent. But there has to be a reason why month after month after month, this is not getting corrected. So, what, if I were standing in your shoes, what I advise my client is, tell me what's the problem? Because there are resources, again, I want to emphasize, I'm not out to get anybody's business, I want to see businesses succeed. I want to see businesses thrive in this community, it's not to kick out any business. But, there are resources out there, I know this as a former, you know, private business owner, go to SCORE. Go to Micro, if they still have Micro, you know, um, around here. Find the resources if you need the help, there's no shame in asking for help, but you can't let something keep going on like this. It was very disconcerting to me, more with the environmental stuff, again, I mean, the parking is the first thing that shoots out at you, and I would also recommend, respectfully, read the packet and find out what's going on with your client, that's part of the investigation that should be happening with, in the representation of the client. So, yeah, eh, my biggest concern is start addressing this nuisance and, and, and this garbage that's back there, and mice and all of that, and paint going out into the air, that's just not healthy. This is a health issue more than a parking issue, at least to me. So just, you know, again, with all due respect, not telling you your job, but kinda am, because I fill those same shoes when I'm not here. So, work with your client on this, that's my recommendation, and I'll pass it at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just have a couple of questions. First and foremost, to address one, one thing that was said, um, in the packet, in this list of, of, of violations, again, not necessarily CUP violations, but parking violations, different things like that. Seventeen of the twenty-five that are on this list happened after October first of twenty-twenty-four. So these are not going way, way back, these are, these are since you've been on board, since you told us you've been there, September, October. And I understand, I understand that, okay, tow trucks are dropping, dropping cars, and they're not supposed to drop them there, they're not supposed to leave them there, okay? But as a business owner, if I know I'm about to lose my ability to do my business, I am doing everything I possibly can to communicate with tow truck drivers, please do not drop any more cars here, we cannot have them there. It's going to cost me my ability to do my business, it's going to cost me li, my, my livelihood, you cannot do that, we cannot, I, I don't care i- if I had to sit out there at night for a while to make sure that they don't drop cars there, because I want to keep my license, I want to keep my ability to do my, I, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do whatever I can. At some point, as a business owner, you can't say, well, that's, that's not my fault, because I'm not the one putting them there. Like, no, you're being the one, you're the one being held liable for them being there, and so you need to make sure that those aren't there anymore. Eh, eh, and there has to be some responsibility eh, 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 on the business owner for that, even though I understand the concerns with, you know, these things happening in the middle of the night, and we're not sure, you know, but there's gotta be relationships with tow truck companies that, that, that we can reach out and say, hey, when you bring cars here, this is where you have to drop them, you cannot drop them on, 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 uh, the service road. And I, and I understand that part of the issue is, is that there's just not enough parking in the lot, so they're, they're bringing them there, they have no other place to, to drop them, and I get that. But when the initial, the initial conditional use permit was granted, everybody understood all of the rules and regulations of it, and had we, he, here's my concern, you keep asking for a revised conditional use permit. We can't meet, we can't follow the rules of the existing conditional use permit. What makes us think we're gonna be able to follow the rules of the, of a revi, now, yeah, it'll create more parking, but what is it gonna do about all the other stuff that, that are the issues? And that's, that, that's one of my concerns, now, here's my biggest concern. And, and maybe these are just yes or no questions, and maybe they're questions that you don't know the answer to. Is there car painting going on on this, on the site?
I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe, I don't know, I mean, there's a picture of one.
Right, and so.
Might, might have been the only one, I don't know.
Right, so if there is car painting going on in the site, which it sounds like there is based on some observation, that's a violation of, eh, eh, is there a car sales company, are there other companies operating their business out of this site, using this address? Do you know?
Is there? Can he, he speak?
Yeah, of course.
Public hearing, yep.
Are there other car business, or car sales business, car sale business, other than you?
Yeah, cars, the car sales, we, we have, we sell car, I have a lot of lectures for that.
Okay, so that, you are selling cars out of that, okay.
I have my, excuse me, I have my last year lecture. What I did, I had the package, that's true, every year I pack a monster.
There is another business that uses his address as their home address, he knows from the planning commission, we talked about it. And I believe Assistant City Administrator, didn't you have somebody come in to talk about a conditional use permit for that location?
Here, can you cover the mic, so, so everybody can hear you?
Before we move there, before I move, but this is there, I came to the city, and the city's giving me the zoning right, they fill in the form, and they sign it, and I took the form to the Department of Transportation, so therefore, the city of Ossio is aware of car war being there, we just did not do it naturally. I came here last year, and I got a permission for the city.
Mayor?
Yes.
It would be helpful if people could identify themselves, uh, before they speak, so we have a clear record of the test, of the testimony.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is Milton Kind.
I'm George K. Salif, owner of Car War.
So, there are multiple car sales?
Just one.
But you, but you are not operating out of that location?
I am, I, I have my offices there, where I receive letter and other thing, like you write this, in your presentation, but the city of, the city of Ossio is aware of it. Because they, I came, they give me the zoning paper, and they signed it, they everything last year, before I take it to the Department of Transport.
We have no record of that, so I don't know what that form would be, or, we've got no, no record of that, I found out by just seeing the sign.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll just, we did, we did talk earlier this week, because I think you were interested in, uh, looking into finding a way to subdivide or, um, get suites assigned, so we were, there was a little bit of back and forth, like, do we do that through the post office, or, um, you know, if, if they wanted to have separate, we were talking about mailing addresses, but.
Yeah, that's just it, I came here, they had a, they just to meet to let him know that last year, I was here, and the city gave me go ahead, they gave me the zoning form, they filled it in, they signed it, and I took it to the Department of Transportation, because that's the procedure, before you have a dealership anywhere, the city have to give, give you the go ahead, have to give you the, the zoning law, the, I mean, the zoning paper to sign, and which I did, so therefore the city, maybe you not aware of it, maybe they did not inform you, but indeed.
What zoning paperwork, do you have a copy of it?
I don't have it now, but I can present it to you another day.
We don't have a copy of that.
Okay, and then, I guess my, my last question is, eh, there was mention of a towing company, is there a towing company that's operating out of that site as well?
Not, not operating, just they, they call the tow, tow cars.
Okay.
That's what I meant by that, they, they, they call a company, come and tow cars, they want towed, is that right?
Because I, I was.
Councilmember Cook, that is a separate business, and it is listed as that address.
Okay.
And that is the tow, I think the actual towing.
Say your name.
Tow truck you see, sitting in the front of the business.
Yeah, I'm Caris, first robbery, and I run the tow truck, yeah.
So, eh, but you are your own entity?
Yeah.
You are not part of either one of these other businesses?
I work with him, on the tow truck, my friend bought it, and we try, try, visit the address to park.
Okay.
And then we see tow, for an everywhere, and just.
And are you, can I ask you a quick question, are you the tow truck driver that's dropping gar, cars off on the service road?
No, no, sometimes I have the tow car, like, sometimes I come there, and I want to see car, I tow it out, yeah.
Okay, um, okay, eh, eh, and so, my, my concerns are, I, I think are still, um, there's a lot going on here. Um, and there doesn't seem to be like, there doesn't seem to me at least to be a lot of paperwork that validates some of the stuff that's going on. And, eh, eh, and I honestly, what it comes, what, what it really comes down to is, it's like, I, I know that if I go to court, and I gotta, I'm gonna plead guilty, and then I've got a six counts of a stay of adjudication, that I know are gonna turn into guilty pleas if I violate again. And yet, there's another violation, because there's too many cars parked on the, on the property, which I understand parking is an issue for you guys, I totally get it. But the rules are the rules, i- if I knew my, my conditional use permit was dependent upon this, the future of my conditional use permit was dependent upon this, I would make doggone sure that I didn't have more than twelve cars on that lot at any one given moment, no matter what I gotta do. I'll go park them at my own house, I don't, I don't know, but I'm not going to let, I'm not going to violate that conditional use permit again, if I know that there's so much on the line here, and it, and, and I'll be honest, and I don't, and I'm not, I don't wanna, I don't wanna point fingers, I don't wanna to, 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 you know, assume intent or anything like that, but there is, there is a certain amount of, uh, it comes off almost as if like, meh, what could really ha, they're not really gonna take, you know, we're just gonna keep kinda doing what we're doing, we'll clean up some of the real obvious stuff. But we're just gonna kinda keep, eh, so there's this kind of aloofness about it that I don't, that, 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 and I, and, and just in hearing the businesses that are around having such, you know, strong opinions on what's going on is, is, is concerning. Eh, and that there hasn't been more action taken, and yeah, there's this idea, well, we want to revise CUP, we want to revise CUP. We were not meeting the standards of the current CUP. And so what, what, at what point, and I, and I read in someplace, eh, in, in one of the documents that we read, that that was an overriding concern for people on the planning com, commission, was that your, you, the direction was given, hey, get everything up to code with the current CUP, and then we can talk about a revised CUP. But we, we haven't been able to get things up to, to, up to the code with the current CUP in, in what seems to me like a relatively long period of time. And, and those are my biggest concerns, and with that out.
So, pretty much anything that I was gonna say has been already taken, I just have one question for the gentleman that operates the second car dealership. As part of your dealership license, how many spaces did you have to tell them that you, how many are they requiring you to have for parking of your vehicles? Three, okay, so, let's just assume for a second that that's all right, that reduces, so this CUP is for the property, okay? Which then that reduces the actual number of allowable vehicles that the other business has, okay, because this is for the whole property, okay? Which means if you got, have to have three parking spaces, that means that now this new one is limited to only nine, okay? And, like everybody said, I am extremely impressed that you've been able to grow your business as quickly as you have, since you signed this conditional use permit back in April of twenty-one, okay? So I don't want to begrudge the fact that you clearly are a good businessman and have grown your business there. I think what this breaks down to is, is that the nature of your current business has outgrown this current space. And, that's in many ways a really good thing, okay? Unfortunately, back to the, the original condition use permit, it was very clear, okay? And is it Mr. Kind, is that how you pronounce your last name, Kane? Okay, how do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Kind.
Kind?
Kind, yeah.
Okay, so, you, you agreed to all this stuff when you signed this document, okay?
Yeah, I know, I honestly.
Okay, and. What's that?
You don't get in somebody, no, it's a yes. I'm not getting the class, repeat again, please repeat.
What I'm just saying is, is that by bringing in the second car dealership, he has a minimum of three spaces he has to maintain to keep his li, his license, okay? That means, when that business got added, that reduced the total allowable to you? By three.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just, it's addition, right? Simple addition, subtraction. And, all these things, I'm looking at the conditional use permit right here, um, that was all very well-known back in twenty-twenty-one. And, you know, like I said, I'm happy for the fact that you've outgrown your business, this particular space, that's what seems to be the case for this here, but, um, the, the nature of this stuff starting to come down, you know, back in early April, and all this stuff coming, and then you retained counsel back in September, October, something like that. You know, for whatever reason, this still is a problem. It's, and it's not just a problem for you, it's a problem for your neighbors too, we've read two letters in tonight, um, that's there. So, I mean, those are all the different types of things that we are being forced to consider, which was, which would seem to be, whether it's somebody dropping cars off at your spot, to me, that's not as big of a deal, as there's space for twelve cars outside at any given time. There's not supposed to be any repairs outside of the enclosed, of an enclosure, that's in the CUP, okay? I believe that's been, I believe that that's been talked about this evening, that there was some car repairs happening on the street, and whatever else, which is clearly outside of the CUP. And whether our police department, which they don't normally do, they don't normally look for ways to cause trouble, okay? Matter of fact, they, they will often look the other way as much as they possibly can. This now has come to us, to the point, you know, a lot of this stuff was talked about the planning commission a month ago. So we should have seen some significant forward progress, so that if it came to us, we could say, yes, we've made some changes. I don't particularly see that that's happened.
Yeah, I mean, actually, we did some changes, but like, some of that one, now, packed like twelve.
Yeah, I mean, actually, we did some change, but like, some of that one, now, about like 12 cars, some, like, the law letter received, the office are seeing 13 cars. We both went, we checked, it was 12 cars. So I don't know where 13 cars came from, and that's that's why I still still come here, we still thinking. But why, I would time 12 cars, 13 cars, and I always stayed late, the may show 12 car or 11 car maximum. But surprisingly, to see a letter that will have 12, 13 cars in there, I don't know, I call everyone to check, it was 12 cars. So it just gave me confusion, gave me sick. Come to be the boat today to have a fit and then let her, and now let her come in, 13 cars. I told the guys are working in there, so how many cars, I go and check, 12 cars. So like, I don't know what to say about.
And and the only thing I can say to that, to your, I appreciate the diligence that you've put forth personally into doing all this stuff.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just a little bit, like, probably a little bit over a week ago. You know, our police officer went in, counted cars, and it exceeded the allotment. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna trust that he knows how to count, okay? Um, so that's just all I have to say. I mean, the terms were clear, they were agreed upon, was signed off on, it's all there. So none of these things now should be a surprise to anybody. Whether the people that you're doing business with are disregarding your questions and your concerns, as a business owner, I would probably do the same thing that Mr. Cook would do, and I'd be talking to my people and saying, don't bring them here. You know, um, that's just, that's just the nature of what's going, because I don't wanna create more problems than we already have, okay? But this has been going on and on and on and on, and I just, I don't, I don't like to be put in the position to have to make this decision, okay? My term on the council, um, you know, with, within two years, I began the council in two thousand and ten. We've never had to do anything like this. So it's not like we're out looking for trouble, because we're usually quite the opposite.
Is there any other public comment?
A gentleman wanted to.
Go ahead, come to the mic, state your name and address.
My name is Dan Kayler, four oh one County Road eighty-one in Osseo. I own the Kayler Car Wash for forty-four years. I was twenty-five when I stood at this podium and addressed Mr. Arnold Fino for a building permit for my car wash. In forty-four years, I've never had to appear before the court or the council for any infractions. So we all get to play by the same rules. It's not an option. The first thing I'd like to call to the attention of the council, do you have this map? This is the original map that was issued in twenty-one for their original conditional use permit. The property of three three seven is incorrectly shown, okay? Title of this page says three thirty-seven County Road eighty-one. What is highlighted in white is actually four oh one County Road eighty-one, my property. My property is a hundred and forty feet wide at the, at the road and three three seven is forty feet wide where it meets, where it meets the service road. Any questions or issues with with that? So we're not talking about a hundred and forty foot wide lot, they have a forty foot wide lot. Their building is twenty-four foot wide, leaving sixteen feet between the building and and my property line. So it's been ongoing, um, every, for in, for the last forty-two years, forty-one years, I've never had an issue with people parking on my property, uh, staying on their side of the road. But they would, the three three seven inhabitants would continually drive on my side of the property, their, my side of the driveway, my property, not theirs. And after a couple of years of complaining and talking, red cones, flags, fence posts, last summer, I I really didn't have a choice. It was eroding away, so I had to, uh, put concrete there and built a fence to the tune of thirteen thousand dollars. Now, I go forty-one years and I don't need a fence and I don't need paving. Now I got it. It it was a thirteen thousand dollar expense that could have easily been avoided if three three seven would have stayed on their side of the road. Uh, the lawyer here says he doesn't know when, when all these infractions and activities and stuff happened. Well, April second of twenty-four, we're just, that's a year and a week ago, is when, is when uh, I filed some complaints. And the complaints were, there were two hundred tires, old junk, some on wheels, some on not, piled in the back of their property. Well, A, tires with water getting in them from the rain causes a mosquito hazard, and that's a health issue. My bigger concern was, you get two hundred tires burning and the Osseo Fire Department can't get to them because the lot is full of junk cars and cars ripped apart. It, if there would, if they would have started on fire, my building would have been in danger. And it's it's stupidity. We don't need two hundred junk tires laying back there. Uh, since then, it's gotten better. I would observe antifreeze and motor oil running freely in their parking lot, in their repair area, outside. Well, guess where antifreeze and oil ends up, on a paved surface? Not the, not the city sewer, but the storm sewer. And it ends up in our lakes and streams. And, you know, the transmission fluid would run down the, run down the gutter and it 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 wasn't good. Battery, there was one vehicle where the battery was dangling out of the vehicle on the ground. And I'm going, boy, batteries start fires. If you look at the conditional use permit, auto wrecking and dismantling is not part of anybody's conditional use permit here, okay? When cars are half ripped apart, they come in smashed, they take pieces, they add pieces, whatever. If you didn't know better, it looked like a wrecking yard. Cars on the street all the time, they claim they don't have anything to do with them, well, there may not be license plates on them, they may be damaged and they end up back on the property at some time. There's people out in the street repairing vehicles, this isn't right. So today, at ten thirty in the morning, the fire hydrant was blocked by a large truck in front of Mcona. And there were two additional cars on the, so it's on this side of the street or their side. So today, the fire hydrant's blocked by a big truck. I assume it was a customer of three three seven. I don't believe, we we, I keep hearing talks of amending the conditional use permit. Osseo isn't in the business of ed, of altering conditional use permits to fix everybody's problems or issues. The permits are written, everybody has to follow them. And if it's too stringent or you can't follow it, I guess you gotta move on. Lastly, I'm really here to support the planning commission's recommendation to not continue the conditional use permit. And as a, just a per, just from a, on a personal standpoint, if the city council agrees to extend or work with, or whatever you wanna say, with with the person that had since April second of last year to fix this, the issue will move to the council, in my opinion. Because you, if 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 you're gonna say, there's another chance, let's give it a whirl, maybe we can make it work, whatever. And if and when it doesn't, then it, then it, then it falls back on the council. Does it go back to the planning commission that has made a recommendation? So I wanna thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I was watching the meetings here at home, so I figured I'd come down and speak a little bit to this. I think there's a little language barrier, potentially, I don't, it could be. Has the city done every effort to make sure the barrier of the language is not there?
Got a question for me?
It's a public hearing, so, city, would you like to answer? You met with them a lot, right?
Um, I have not been the one meeting with them, no, I've, I have communicated with the attorney though.
Okay, attorney. Have you met with him?
Yes, I have.
Is there, do you believe there's a language barrier?
I do not.
Okay. I also hear, I mean, he's a small business owner, I get it. How many of those violations were thirteen cars when the CUP is twelve? Because I hear a lot of, gotta follow the rules, gotta follow the rules. For example, tonight's meeting was amended with not enough time, no matter what kind of change it is. If it was just a wording change, you can do it when you approve it. Following the rules. I think there's some selective enforcement, there's other business owners in this town that have unlicensed vehicles, trailers, that the police are not towing away, impounding. I know it's a hard decision. I know they've been given ample amount of time to fix this, and I totally get that. I, you know, I think it's a language barrier, I know he he doesn't agree, which is fine. But watching, uh, or hearing testimony here today, talking about city property where vehicles are being ticketed and stuff, part of the, uh, number of violations or whatever that were submitted, which may not be actually their issue, so I don't know why they were submitted. To watching a neighbor's vehicle get impounded when the police knew it normally had a dealer plate on it. And you know, they're making it on there, could have fallen off, somebody could have stolen it. My understanding is the police didn't go up to the door, it is impounded. But again, I think it's selective enforcement. I was told with my neighbor, they've been watching for a while. Here, sounds like they've been watching a lot. I get it, sometimes, you know, could be, uh, it could be just the way they grew up, I don't know. But it's the way they're making the the improvements, from what I've seen. And this last one, April eighth, was the trailer counted as one of the vehicles, do you know?
Would you like me to have an officer step up that actually?
Yes, please.
Ryan, were you the, it was, did you write the citation? Did you write that last citation or what? Okay, did you see the pictures? Did you count the vehicles?
We'll have to come up to.
Can you come to the mic, please, state your name for the record?
Did you see the violation or who did that for you?
Officer Patrinsky did the initial count with the photos, I double checked the nation's citation.
There was a violation.
Was the trailer counted as one of the vehicles?
No.
Okay, it's all alone, thank you.
But we're, but again, we're still at thirteen, you know? There's plenty of room to have a lot more vehicles on that property, that's why I'm kinda confused and why the CPU hasn't been expanded to sixteen, I think, was the the average, if I remember right. So any, any questions for me on whatever I said?
Mr. Mayor? So as always, Preston always appreciate the opinions. Would like to address a couple of other things that you brought up, just in fairness. So the language barrier, I could see where at the onset, it looks like that could be an issue. What I would propose is, since last October, they have council. If there's a language barrier, that language barrier could easily be handled through their council. So I don't necessarily think that a language barrier is at the root of the problem. I don't, I'm not necessarily saying there's blame, per se, but if there's a problem, there's something more foundational going on when, and this kind of brings up my second point question, or not really question, it's comment. Um, you mentioned the vehicles and some of them are right at thirteen, so yeah, you're being a little picky. And and sure, if this was, if this problem, at least for me, if this problem was merely a parking issue and just that, like nothing else, you guys have too many cars. You know, I'd be fully supportive of relooking at the number of cars that are being parked, how do we solve for that problem? So I would like to take that problem out of this, right? Parking is its own thing and easily addressed, right?
Yep.
My personal concern, and I'll go over it again, is all this property issue stuff. If you run a business, keep your business clean, I get it, it's a, it's a fix, car fix-up place, right? Okay, there's lots of car fix-up places, I can go right down the street, we got a, you know, half a dozen. I can go to Accurate Auto, not endorsing, but I can go to Accurate Auto and I'm not gonna see tires on the back, uh, which sounds like from another citizen up to the tune of sixty at one point, and he did say it got better, but it's not corrected. In this type of situation where we are dealing with public safety issues, that it's fixing it a little bit, just to me, isn't good enough. It need, like, go fix it, right? I mean, I can kinda tip my hand right now to where my head is at. I mean, I think people know me enough by now, I'm just gonna shoot from the hip. I don't wanna see a small business that is trying to thrive just shut down. But that being said, this isn't something that's some new issue that just came up. Man, I mean, how many times do you gotta be given a warning, right? And my head is going towards, the discussion isn't about adjusting a CUP so that the issue is no longer an issue. And and I agree, and and I apologize, I I. And and I agree, and and I apologize, I I wrote the name down, I've already lost it, so I apologize not getting the name right. But but that's the point I think was being made, was another citizen is going, look, it, don't just change the CUP so that a bad problem goes away on paper, right? And I don't think that's what you're suggesting either.
Right.
What I see that needs to be fixed is all the stuff outside of the parking issue. And and the way my head is going with this is, fix that. But I think, and I might be getting the term wrong, abatement. But I remember owning property of my own and having to deal with housing inspectors and things like that. And when you do let something go too long, guilty, they give you seven days, and they say, you fix it, Nick, or we're taking your rental license away. Okay, well, I don't see this being very different, okay? I'm not in a place right now where I'm out of hand, gonna go, done, right? You got your, you got your, you know, third strike and you're out. But I will say, where my head is at, is this isn't gonna be a thing that you get a month, or three months, or six months to fix. This is a, get on the phone, get all your buddies, get whatever it takes to stay in business. Get them out there, clean this up. You got a week, 10 days, tops. Because to me, you give somebody a chance, I think that's a fair chance. I think that's a reasonable chance. Seven days to a week, you're in a business, right? There is responsibility in being in business. And I think that solution, if that's something that's even considered, shows a modicum of fairness to go look at. If you're all here tonight representing your business, here's your shot. I mean, it's come to this. The clock has ticked, Big Ben is ringing at 12. This is not a wake-up call. This is, I'm shaking you and telling you, you got seven to 10 days, if that's what's decided, to fix it, correct it, get straight. We'll deal with the parking piece if you get it straight. But you gotta get it straight. And I think if there's a language issue, not gonna say there is or not, I'm looking right at council. Council, your responsibility as council is to communicate with your client. Communicate that. Let them know in whatever terms you need to do, and get it right. Because, again, it pains me to think that we actually have to think about shutting somebody down, right? To to Councilmember Schultz's point, he's like, I look at him as like legacy man. He's been here forever, and he's never had one of these, right? I'm brand new. Bummer that within my first six months, we're dealing with one of these. But I wanna bring myself to bear to be like, I'm not gonna be one of those guys, this knee-jerk reaction. I'm not gonna go, yeah, I don't care what the reason is, you're done. But, this is fair warning, man. This is, again, throwing a number out, seven to 10 days. And I would not, I would not vote yay for anything above 10 days. And if you can't get it done in 10 days, well, maybe you gotta start thinking of what you really wanna do to run a business. Because I know, I I'm watching people building a thing on top of my house that's taking them days. You can clean up something in a week, if you really put your mind to it. You get everywhere, you got a lot of people here. Get them, do whatever it takes, man, save your business. I would love to see your business thrive. But there's no more warnings after tonight. There's, this is your last shot, at least as far as I'm concerned. This is your last shot, this is what you have to do. If you really wanna keep your business, then just do it. Just do it, it's not that hard. And we will, or again, in my world, I would say, okay, we'll deal with the parking. And then we'll consider the whole conditional use permit. But you have to fix all this other stuff. I mean, locked up tight. There should never be green stuff flowing anywhere. That's what you have a shop for. If you need to build a build your building, let's discuss that. Again, I'm telling you, there are business resources out there like SCORE and other places that you can go if you need help with that part of it. Okay? So, again, I did not make grandstand, I guess that's the
Have you been, have you been out to the property?
Have I been what?
Out to the property.
I see that property at least once a week, and I just saw it, I just saw it this weekend, as a matter of fact. Because I happen to partake of the, well, actually, it was just that that gentleman's place with my Lincoln just a few days ago, and washed it. So I was like literally right next door to the property. Did I specifically walk around on their property and look at stuff? No, but I do remember what I see, I just as I'm seeing people here tonight. And on about a weekly to every other week basis, I happen to go to the Osseo Pawn Shop, because you can get really good guitars there, getting not an endorsement, but you you can get musical equipment, et cetera, which is why I go there. So to answer your question, affirmative, yes.
Was there garbage and trash everywhere?
Uh, it was unsightly, and I did not walk into the back. But yes, anytime I drive by there, I can tell, the the pictures don't lie. So
I don't see in those pictures right there.
So, not in that particular picture, but at this point, you know, with all due respect, I'm not gonna play semantics, right? I mean, we know each other well enough, I'm not gonna play semantics. But I wanted to bring up to your point about the vehicles, and only 13, and are they being picked on, and okay, we'll discount that, we'll take that away. I don't care about the cars at this point. I care about hazardous waste going into
I hundred percent agree with you.
And I know you, I know you, so we'll just, we'll kinda leave it at that. Again, I've taken up way too much time, but I I hope I'm kinda letting, I'm kinda signaling to my other council members where I'm at, if this comes to a vote.
I mean, from those pictures there, I see the the trailer with everything on there. It's in the middle of the night, looks like they packed it up, can't deliver it to the dump until morning.
And and fair enough, and and I'm gonna make this final word, so I mean, you can talk. But my final word on it is, okay, great. I'm not gonna onesie-twosie, pick pictures, pick out stuff, semantics, no. You know I don't play that way.
I know, I'm just going off the evidence as it's given.
I've I've addressed, I think what you brought up. I think language barrier was a very salient point. But I think language barrier isn't the problem. Right, and and I'm I'm looking, and and I see, you know, gentleman nodding his head. So he understands what I'm saying, and hopefully saying it loud enough.
Looks like you're trying to ask him to
Not asking for anything. So at that point, that's all I'm gonna say, Preston, but again, I wanna thank you for coming up and
Thank you.
Making your points.
Anybody else have anything for any comments I had?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
And I'm not gonna go on and on, but but and while I I don't disagree with everything that you're saying, Councilmember Torres, I do, to a certain degree, disagree with the one more chance. Like, to me, the red flag was waving the moment you were down at a courthouse, or or the moment you're interacting with legal counsel and making plead, you know, plea agreements on the existing CUD violation, or uh the conditional, the CUP violations. That was the the immediate, the immediate time where we we pleaded, you know, guilty to one, and then we have sixth day of adjudication, knowing that any more violations uh will result in all six of those things turning into guilty pleas. At, I mean, what there there can't be, I mean, you're saying, well, well, seven to 10, like, at that point in time, that was to me, uh uh uh, hey, we better get our stuff in order, otherwise we're, this is gonna go bad. If that wasn't enough, the moment the 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 Planning Commission recommended the revocation of the CUP, that should've been a giant red flag, saying, oh, this, they're serious. Like, we've gotta do something about this. And and to me, those things have already happened. And and while some changes have been made, not all of the changes that need to be made have been made. Um, and and I do, I do agree to a certain degree to Councilmember Schultz's point, in the sense of, it might just be a situation where the business has outgrown the property. I mean, and and that's a valid thing. It it, this is a tiny, as as was presented, this is a tiny little narrow strip of property. And it might just be a situation where the business has has become successful, which is great, to the point where this tiny little strip of land no longer is big enough to meet the needs of this business. And it might be time to go find another. This isn't about, you know, and I I heard council say, well, this will, this takes away my my client's livelihood. No, it doesn't. It doesn't. It just means they can't do it there. It's not changing the fact that they can't do their business, based on what I'm I'm seeing or hearing with all the different traffic that's coming. Sounds like they're pretty good at it.
Councilmember Cook, this is a public hearing, we can get to council's comments in a little bit.
Oh, I, I'm just, no, and I I'm I'm talking to council in the sense of, like, to me, these were the red flags of, like, where
Yeah.
Uh, sorry, I'm sorry, I just
Yeah, so
Okay. First of all, with respect to the gentleman's response, I did not say I didn't know when the violations took place. They said they took place before I got on board, so I knew when the violations were there, first of all. Second of all, he's assuming that the truck was to my client, there's no proof of that, and and there's a lot of assumptions going on here. With respect to the Councilmember Torres, with respect to the the parking, I'll bring up the issue of due process. And when I say that, if you look at all the the tickets, the complaints about the CUP, it's about parking, it's essentially about parking. There's no complaints about antifreeze, there's no complaints about oil, there's no complaints about batteries. And here, and so therefore, I would ask this City Councilmember Torres to 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 recognize that.
Okay, so, and I apologize for cutting you off, but I do wanna make this point, since you just made that point. I would highly recommend that you read the packet, it's public. You can read the packet. There are absolutely violations in there that have been made, that are above and beyond the parking.
Not presented to me.
Yes.
Not presented, not presented to my client.
Excuse me, sir, are you the member of the public?
I am.
Are you representing a set of clients?
I am.
Okay. Due diligence, before we even start talking about due process, which I'm not gonna do at a council meeting, go look at a public packet that has that information before you make points that are not on point, that are incorrect. We're on the record, we are on the record. And due process?
You know, due process means
Due process happened at those first violations. They absolutely have had their day in court.
I'm not, I'm talking, sir, I'm talking about references to antifreeze, oil, batteries. That was, those were never brought up to my client. They were never presented to my client as as being violations. If you have an internal, between the the staff and the police, that they they've indicated that, it's not communicated to my client.
I'm literally looking at, sir, number two in the packet, second violation.
If the record speaks for itself, we're
Four six, 416, I will leave it at that.
Was it communicated to my client?
But, obviously, they were cited. Warning letter, warning letter, right? So, uh uh uh, again, I wanna be respectful of the council's time.
Attorney Techen?
Right, no, I I would just recommend that we allow the public testimony to conclude, then council can have its discussion. Um, and I think if there are comments where the record speaks for itself, because it's in the documentation, I I think that's
And I'd like to apologize, I raised my voice, and that wasn't, that wasn't respectful, so
No problem.
My apologies.
I raised mine also, no problem. And with respect to the language barrier, I think there is a language barrier. And I've tried to, I have tried to address that numerous times. And I can't be at the premises 24/7, so if he doesn't understand, I I, that's something, I, it's a little bit out of my control, but I have tried to try to address that with him, to make sure that that doesn't come into play, so, fair enough. Thank you. I would like, I would like to thank the council for the time to listen to this. I know it's a very uh issue that may be tough. I I do wanna thank the council for listening to our our position on this.
Is there, is there any public, any additional public comment?
I just wanna address the warning letter. Doesn't mean he got it, just so you know. Just because it's in the packet, doesn't mean he got it. Ideally, it's a hard decision for you guys, I totally under, I totally understand. But from what I've seen by driving on their property, it looks a lot better than it did in March. So, thank you for your time. Oh, I do like raising my voice sometimes.
I'm Siddiqui Jabata, I'm a customer for Makona. You know, sometimes too, when we, when I take my car there, we'll be having a lot of disturbance from the, the car wash nearby. So, a lot of times too, we, we'll be having inconvenience as customers from the guy, from the shop. So if there's something too that you guys can look into. And is it possible that you guys can have a parking sign posted on the street so that nobody's, uh, somebody else is not doing something, and they're putting a blame on Makona? Because Makona is a business that's uh, that's making a lot of money. You know, because I have my dealership in Zimemem, but Makona is where I take my car for repairs. Because, you know, he offer a good deal, so we work together to make it work for everybody, you know? So if there's a way that you guys can have parking signs on the street to avoid all the people coming to park, and then taking the blame and put on Makona, that is helping all of us in the community, and then that would not be a good thing. So that's my point.
Okay.
My name is Ibrahim Turet, and I'm a customer to Makona Business. We bring a lot of cars at times, but at pawn appointment, we will call and set an appointment with them, and we'll bring them cars and they're prepared. But according to, I mean, from the discussion and what people brought up here, it seems to me much like kinda hit that's going through, because other businesses are intervening with the business just so they can get them locked down. And people are just bringing things like, that you go on another present property to check, and all those uh, events that's happening up. So you wanna tell you in the council that, uh, as Siddiqui said, that these signs put on the road this is the time, you know what's going on there? It's called the pack, you can't, because like the people that basically, and the
Okay, so I guess we'd look Okay, we got a motion by a council Hang on a second. Saying by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Hearing closed at 8:47. Okay, now time for council
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
The only, I mean, we've had a lot of tonight. The only thing that I would point out is kind of to Councilmember Torres, seven to 10 days. I'd be, I think that happened when the Planning Commission recommended revocation. There was at least, I think it's probably a month, could it be three weeks, when it was? But, that's, you know, let's say it's three weeks, 21, twice, twice what you're for. Was the initial call to action from the city perspective, addition to everything else on, and to the seven counts, including the state of the situation, that there's money acted on. That's just, that's the only other comment that I have.
Nope. If that would, someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, can I just
Oh, Attorney Techen, go ahead.
Uh, no, I'll let council finish up its discussion first.
I'm just clarifying, I just would like some clarification. And maybe this is for shade, I I don't What are, I mean, I I see in the in the packet, you know, it it lays out basically that we can, we can approve the 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 Just get to where I'm supposed to be here.
Pitch 56.
Yeah. That we could approve the revocation of the of the conditional use permit. We could approve revocation to see, uh, conditional use permit with noted changes as amended. We could deny the revocation of the of the CUP, or we could table this action for more information. My 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 question, I guess, is when it comes to number two, approve the revocation of the of the conditional use permit with noted changes as amended. What what, what are their options? What are our options here with that? Like, and what 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 sort of changes or Like, and what, what, what sort of changes or amendments would we, I mean? I guess that's my, that that would be a question I I would have.
Mary.
Maybe that's a too broad in general, the question, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm mayor and council, I guess, I'm not sure what staff had in mind when they drafted that particular option. Um, so if if staff wants to weigh in, that's great. But I think that from my point of view, you know, the options are for council to revoke or if they want to see, if they want to allow an extension of some kind to allow the owner to bring them business into compliance. Um, we've heard a lot of comments already from council on that particular option. That would be another option. Um, but, or or to just table it, postpone it to another meeting if the council feels it needs more information. And act tonight.
Can I ask a question? If it were to get tabled, would there be another public hearing then when it was addressed again?
Uh, no, you've, you, the council has complied with its requirement to hold the public hearing with respect to the proposed revocation.
Thank you.
And I will say, as long as I'm talking, um, uh, if the council, if it is the council's direction to, uh, revoke the CUP, then my recommendation would be that you direct, uh, staff to work with the city attorney to draft a resolution uh, with appropriate findings to bring that back to the council for approval at the next meeting.
Yeah.
So let me ask you that with that. Um, if that was the route that went, that happened, technically, the revocation would not be approved until that resolution was passed at the next meeting?
That would be correct.
And if that revocation then at that next meeting was then, was voted down, it, it, everything would, not the, 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 it would be no different than?
Well, if the council passes a motion to direct staff to, um, prepare that resolution, presumably, the council is on board with with the revocation.
I understand, I'm just asking, I'm just. I'm trying to make sure that we have all of the options before us laid out so I can. I I I don't, I don't feel good about potentially closing a small business in our town. I I don't feel good about that. There's nothing that feels good about that. Um, I am a small business owner in this town. But I also have, I use the space the way that it was agreed out to be used. And, um, and I follow the, you know, the rules to the best of my ability, best of my knowledge, I get, I mean. And so I, you know, that that's where I'm wrestling with this is, is that how many chances do you get? Um, before action has to be taken? And 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 again, this is, this is significant action, but as council Schultz, councilman Schultz referred to this, it's not a secret. This isn't just coming out of nowhere. You know, this has been an ongoing thing, uh, for a while and the planning commission, you know, three weeks ago or whatever it was, you know, recommended the revocation of this, of this, uh, CUP and um, that's, that's a huge thing. And it wasn't a close vote. If I, I mean, I I read all the the minutes from that meeting, it was a six to nothing vote. It was overwhelming. Um, and so that's the frustrating part is that within that span, A, another violation happens and B, not all of the things that needed to be corrected were corrected. And so, you know, that's the hard part is where you want to give people the benefit of the doubt, but at what point, you know? And and I understand that they do good work and I, you know, hearing you guys talk about that, I totally get it, like, um, you know, it it and and so it's, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard one for me. I I I really, really wrestle with it, but at the end of the day, you know, I mean, I just feel like, um, the the, the, the chips have been laid, I mean, the chips, the cards have been on the table for a while. And it just, nobody seems to 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 be, the sense of urgency is significantly lacking. And ultimately, it could end, it could end up costing, and then that's, that's unfortunate. But unfortunately, I think that's kind of where where we're at.
Your honor, I'm Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, following, uh, council member Cook's train of thought. Um, yeah, I mean, until I heard him say that, it really didn't, the timing wasn't a hundred percent crystal clear in my mind, and I'm thinking, because I remember reading that part of the packet where going through in the six-zero vote and all that, and it didn't dawn on me, yeah, that was, that was three weeks ago.
Yeah.
You know, seven to ten days, I'm thinking like, this is the first time you're here, first time you get to be in front of a public body, but then, no, you were in front of that public body with a hearing. And you didn't take care of it, knowing that you were coming here, had three weeks to do it. Also, following, I think possibly a train of thought. So procedurally, and I guess this is for attorney teaching, the procedurally, if we say done, you lose it tonight, that's our vote. Procedurally, there's two more weeks that happen between that and the effective killing of the CUP. Is that right? Or whatever the term getting.
Right, we would bring back a resolution for adoption at the next.
Two weeks.
But it would be up to the council if they wanted to allow that as a grace period or not, but you wouldn't have to. That's a, that's a council decision.
I think, and it doesn't, I mean, in my mind, it doesn't necessarily have to be a condition, it means you lost it. Done, lost it. And there's two weeks till we actually stamp the paper, right? I'm done.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'd like to charge to make a motion, please.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to direct city staff to bring forth a revocation resolution.
I got a motion by council member Schultz to direct staff to work with the city attorney to bring forward a revocation resolution.
At the next meeting?
At the next council meeting? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Cook. Any further discussion?
Just one last clarification, it's a two-week process, right? Between when we vote now and when it when the hammer comes down.
Twenty-eighth.
Two weeks.
Right, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Two, I'm gonna say this real clear, it's two weeks until the hammer comes down. I'm done with my discussion.
Okay. See, no discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number nine, old business, nine A. Twenty twenty-five alley reconstruction project, series twenty twenty-two bond issue and remaining bond proceed. Welcome, Mr. Kurtz.
Mayor and council, I'd just like to have Rebecca Kurtz come up from Ellers to discuss. This is the, uh, from a past council meeting, we were talking about what to use for payment and, um, Rebecca will be able to give us kind of her, her opinions on what to do.
How much fits my opinion?
What we, what, what issues we do have.
Fair enough.
What we can do with the, yes, bond proceeds.
Uh, Mr. Mayor remembers that the council Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. Um, there is a memo that outlines some background and as, um, many of you have heard me talk in the past. There were, um, sorry, I didn't know if you were hearing me or not. There were unspent gross bond proceeds, um, from the twenty twenty-two bond issue that were a result of, um, at that point in time, we had bonded in twenty-two for the twenty-two and twenty-three project. The twenty-three project, um, was going to get pushed forward. Um, there were some of those unspent bond proceeds spent. But when we get to today, we have about six hundred and eighty thousand of unspent bond proceeds from the series twenty twenty-two improvement bonds. Um, again, those bonds that were issued were, um, improvement bonds, which means that the bond proceeds um, are going to be restricted on how they can be spent. Um, and there is in the memo a summary of that, but a couple of things to remind you is that, um, if the bonds are going to be spent, they need to be spent on a, what we call a four twenty-nine or an improvement project where at least a minimum of of twenty percent of that project is assessed back to the benefiting property owner. Um, another option that has been presented in the past was that funds could be, um, transferred to the debt service fund. And what that would mean is that the funds would be reused to reduce the levy on those, um, series twenty twenty-two bonds. So we could reduce the levy on the debt service levy by about fifty-seven thousand dollars in the years twenty-six through twenty thirty-seven, um, if you did want to use that option. Um, you'll see in the memo that we did present a third option, which outlines using, um, some of the funds to reduce the debt levy and some of the funds toward the, um, proposed twenty twenty-five, um, project. That absolutely is an, um, option you have. I will say that I think that that does create a little more of some challenges with accounting to make sure that they are being spent, um, properly if we start to take that six hundred and eighty and, um, allocate it in several different ways. But, um, it is an option if that is the direction that you have. Um, we have been talking about this, as you know, for a while, and I bring that up only from the standpoint of I do know that you are looking for, um, some, how you're going to move forward with your twenty twenty-five projects. But we also are pushing up against some deadlines. Um, August eleventh of twenty twenty-five is really the date where we need to have, um, a decision made on those bond proceeds in order to avoid some arbitrage compliance issues and stay, um, within the requirements that the federal government puts on us for spending of bond proceeds. It's a three-year, um, spend down period, which would be August eleventh, which ties to the closing date. So, um, with that, I am happy to go into as much detail on any of these options as you'd like. I know you've heard me talk on them in the past, um, and happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So you talk about the three-year spend down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would that, does that impair our ability to use the projected fifty-seven thousand on this?
Um, if we allocate it and if we go with the option one and use the fifty-seven thousand, it would be, um, put in a debt service fund and be considered spent.
Okay.
Because it would have been committed to that debt service fund, or even though the spend down would be over that period of time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I just gonna throw my thoughts out there. Um, when we're talking about these bond proceeds that are sitting out there, this is money that we're already spending. We've already secured this money, we're spending it. Um, and while it'd be nice to do a bunch of different things, I think the very least we should consider using this money for would be to cover the city's costs of this project, since we've already got the money out there, we're already paying on it, so we don't have to bond again. Okay? And then whatever is left out of that, to commit that then to the debt service over the remaining life of the bond.
Do we have a sense on the city's portion? On the, on the.
I was going to say, um, I don't need an immediate, I don't have an action specifically on this, so if you want to take this information, I'll stay as you consider your next item two, if that helps with the discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So I think, um, to what council member Schultz was talking about, I mean, this kind of coming in to the council was always kind of on my mind that that save from last year would be used in this way, so I I agree. It's a, I think I like that plan. Use it and then whatever's left, put against debt.
Yeah, my whole, my whole philosophy behind that is, is that this, the residents are already paying on this type of thing. It avoids us having to issue additional bonds to cover our portion. Um, you know, the infrastructure improvements, that's already allocated for in the enterprise funds. So I, that's just something I'm throwing out there for everybody to consider. I think when I'm looking at all the different possibilities of this, that's what makes the most sense to everybody that's not on this project. Because it's money that we're already paying for, it's money we're already loving, it's sitting there. And if we do something different with this, I mean, if we use some of that, it's gonna break, it's gonna cut back on our fifty-seven thousand over the life of this to some degree. So, I mean, I don't know what that number would be, but I think as I'm trying to process all these combinations or permutations of this for the last, I don't know, year maybe, um, that's what seems to make the most sense to me in this moment.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm still getting used to how to do this. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to, oh, that's the wrong. That's the wrong.
Do you?
Yeah.
Can I just pause you for?
No, we don't have to make a motion.
You don't.
Need to make a motion on mine, and it might be helpful to hear from Allison before you commit to my.
Disregard.
Yeah.
It's been a long evening, mayor and council. Um, so I, what I heard the council say, and I was just asking for clarification from Mr. Groan too. Um, and I apologize, I don't have that, oh, thank you. Um, the second page of my, of my report, I have two tables included in there, uh, proposed funding summary based on the ASBID costs. We're looking at surface improvements and drainage improvements. So you do have an enterprise fund for the storm sewer improvements, um, that three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. It's the six hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and one cent, the surface improvements. Um, it's that, that amount that we're looking for guidance for the council, from the council as far as how much you would like to assess for that. So, um, and in the packet, table two, I have, um, I just put out three scenarios, just, you know, one based on the current assessment policy, and then I just picked the twenty twenty-two average. Um, just to get, to give council some ideas, some, some food for thought when looking at some, um, alternatives for assessments. So you'll see in that table two, there's, um, a total city cost in the very last column that ranges between four hundred and ninety-nine thousand and change and six hundred and fifty-one thousand and change. That includes the drainage improvements, that three hundred and seventy-eight. So, uh, uh, depending on how council wants to look at breakdown of those funding mechanisms, as I mentioned, that three hundred and seventy-eight thousand plus for the storm sewers, we were anticipating would be paid via the enterprise fund. Um, and then the surface, the city portion of the surface improvements would be from the bond funds, but certainly looking for any, whatever the council's direction would be this evening.
So, quick question, Mr. Mayor. So, just kind of spitballing rough numbers, we're talking about if we allocate this resources the way you just talked about, we're looking about a, just shy of two hundred thousand dollars spent on the city part.
Correct, that would be, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, council member Schultz on table two. It would be the, uh, second column from the right would be the city portion of surface costs based on the scenarios that I presented in the council packet.
But the other option is you could take, could you do surface and not tap the enterprise fund and spend the four ninety-nine?
I defer to the finance colleagues, because you don't, engineers aren't great at answering the finance questions.
Is it just road, or can it use it for infrastructure?
You have to assess twenty percent to use it.
Yeah, so I'm just saying if you, and your table two, I don't, is that up? The first one, assessment, assess eighty percent, total city cost four ninety-nine. You know, using surface and not tapping the enterprise funds to stabilize those, use the four ninety-nine, as council member said, and then take the remaining hundred and eighty and use that to reduce debt levy on the rest of it.
If.
That's what you're saying, right?
Right. Kind of.
Yeah.
Mayor and council, you would need, so the total project's about a million dollars.
Yeah.
About six eighty of these unspent bond proceeds. So when we're talking about the drainage improvements, we're talking about finding those from the stormwater fund, we charge a stormwater fee every quarter.
Yeah.
And are you asking if you can use bond proceeds for that?
Yes.
No, because you're not, because you don't assess for that.
Okay.
Correct?
That's correct.
Correct, yeah.
That's a simple answer.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a simple answer, okay.
So the total city cost of four ninety-nine, that includes the three hundred something. The three hundred that would be coming out of the storm sewer. If I'm looking at that correctly.
Yes, uh, just sorry, in the, in the, this transition here, I think. Yes, uh, just, sorry, in the, in the, this transition here, I think the question was if the last column of table two, that includes the 378,000 of drainage improvements.
And that's what I was wondering, but obviously we're not assessing, so that can't be a portion of it.
Correct, so it's the second column from the right is the city portion of the surface cost.
If we do at least 20%, or...
Yes.
We could pay the 121 out of that and have the, whatever, 400, 440 or whatever, 80 out to write down debt service.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing for the council to really start thinking about is we have to be able to, in some combination, pay for all of this upfront, because assessments come in over time. So I'm just saying that we, we would probably have to use the whole 680 plus the 3 something to cover everything, and then we can recover over the next 20 years, the assessments that we got coming back, just because otherwise we have to bond for the whole project, and we have to pay the whole project upfront. We can't rely on assessments to come back to us, because it takes several years to get those back. I mean, we might have some pre-pays and things like that, but just as far as, just to think about it, we've gotta pay for the whole project.
And the backside of that, we then can utilize the assessment portion coming back to cover our 57.
Yes, we can, absolutely.
Assuming that we're gonna get that much back, and it, based on pre-pays and based on everything else, I mean, we, yeah, that's where we come back. I mean, and there might be some people, I know that there are some special assessments, like, if there's any veterans, for example, that live on this thing, we might not be able to actually assess them, they can apply for exclusions that we're still gonna have to cover. And I'm just trying to figure out a way, long-term here, also to mitigate that 57, because when it comes in here in a couple of months, we're gonna have to account for that and bring that to you guys. And if we didn't go with that particular plan, then we have to figure out where we're gonna get that from. And I listened to our conversation today about looking at the EDA levy and how, you know, we're having consternation about that. This is, this, this is an easy way to avoid that impact versus any other type of a scenario. And if we do use the money there to do this, we don't have to initiate another bond issue. If we've got enough to cover the costs of this project, we don't have to bond more money. Which then you've got your startup costs, you've got your interest costs, all that kind of stuff that ends up on top of it.
Would, would that be correct, Rebecca, or?
If, if you have, I mean, yes, if you have correct, if you have all the project funded, you're going to bond.
Mr. Mayor. Gary, do you have, do you, sorry, I just want, can you step up, Gary?
Come on.
Sorry.
Council, there's, there's two pieces that we're talking about here. So you got the 680, that's unspent from 2022. That, plus we would need to take 375,000 roughly from our stormwater fund and put those two together, that's the financing for the project, okay? We've, and as we've done in, uh, a number of projects over the past few years, that portion of the project costs that pertain to the infrastructure for water, sewer, and storm, we've been paying for those right upfront. So this would be consistent with that. Then out of the 680 or the, say, 700,000, you would have an assessment portion, and if you assess less than 100% of it, you have a city portion that ends up getting paid, we repay the bond via a property tax levy for that specific bond issue. Once we have got this direction as far as we're gonna go, um, we can go back with Rebecca now and put all the pieces of the 2022 bond issue back together, because it was originally put together, um, with several components and assumptions of what the assessments were gonna be. Once we get the, the final direction from the council, then we can go back and we can project what the assessments are gonna be. We know the piece of it that paid, we paid for, um, some of the water sewer and storm on 7th and 8th, or 8th and 9th, whatever it was. And we will have contributed this piece from the sanitary sewer, or from the stormwater, we'll put all of those back together, and we'll have a new levy number for you, because this current year in 2025, we levied 122,000 specifically for the repayment of the 2022 bond issue, based on all the preliminary numbers that we had at the time of that issuance. So, those will get reworked, but you got the two issues, the financing, we can put that together with the 680 and 375 from the stormwater fund. Then on the assessment side, that will impact and be part of the 22 overall, um, project, and there'll be a city portion and an assessment of that, so I don't know if that helps at all.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Uh, no, it, it does, um, and, and I, and maybe this question is out of turn, and maybe it can't be answered yet with, with some of what you just described. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the question that everybody knows I'm gonna ask, is ultimately, how does this impact our constituents who live on these alleys? I, 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 if, if we use this, I mean, the, the numbers that were presented us, to us, you know, two or two meetings ago, three meetings, whenever that was, um, as far as the assessments go, you know, based on whether or not we do equal assessments across the board, or if we assess different amounts per alley based on whatever, that was a big conversation that we had, you know, a few meetings ago. And ultimately, I think the people that are watching at home and some people that are sitting here in, in the crowd, that's what they want to know, is, is how, does this change that, or are those numbers still the same as what we talked about three, four weeks ago?
Uh, I'm not sure, but that second column in there that says city cost.
Yeah.
Which is like 120,000, and then with the different assessment rates, it goes up, that ends up being the city share of that, and that will be repaid via property taxes. So the, as you assessed 80%, you're, the city's obligation is this, and as you assess less for it, the city's obligation to be picked up via tax levies over the life of the issue increases, so.
So, excuse me, if I did chime in there, is I think I understand your question, this particular part of the conversation about the city portion does not affect that part at all? We're not, we're not talking about that side of it, this, we're talking about our part of it if we decide to do this. And as I looked, just did some quick and dirty math, the balances that we would have, we'd be on the total project right around a thousand dollars short. Which we'd have to, we could have to come up with at a thousand dollars, which we've got contingency funds that can cover that for the short term, there's plenty of other funding mechanisms for that.
We, we have the funds, we can make that work, but we're just looking at it kind of at a high level, this is how we're gonna finance it, the assessments are totally different. The assessments get assessed at whatever levels you want to assess them, and then that will then, you know, come back to the city over 20 years or 15, I can't remember exactly, Natalie had that number. And then with the assessments, what that will do is then, if you lower assessments, which is a total council decision, um, it only, it will affect the general levy for everyone in, in the city. That, that's, you know, because the city's portion is higher, so then we have to levy for that in our general levy for the whole city, if it's not assessed. So those, those are just kind of how those things, but the payment of it is, we're just talking payment, we've got the money, we're, we're good that way, we can make it work this way, if that's the way the council wants to do it. You know, or like what Rebecca said, is that we could take that 680, throw it towards debt service, and we could do a bond, another bond. I'm just, that's, that's kind of what we're at, is just the financing part of this project. The assessments are separate.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, given the current market conditions, if we can avoid doing a bond issue right now, I think that's a wise move, because the numbers are all over the place right now, especially even municipal bonds and city bonds, it's, it's, I wouldn't want to put a toe into that, so, um, if we can do this without having to issue a bond, I think that's a good thing.
So using the proceeds in the 300 covers the costs?
Pretty close.
Like a thousand dollars.
And, and then there's really no change into assessment what we're currently paying. And then the people on the project would have no assessment.
Nope, this would pay for the project, and then you guys decide what the assessment is, it's totally separate. We have enough money to pay for the project, because we always pay for the project upfront.
Yep.
Then we get our assessments, so you now have to decide what your assessments are.
And I just want to reiterate, you get to decide what your assessments are, but if you use this money on the 20, even though it's fully funded, in order to use this 680,000, you have to legally assess a minimum of 20% to get back. So the project is fully funded, but you have to assess to get back at least a minimum of 20%. Otherwise, you cannot use that 600,000.
Can you remind me, what's our current assessment policy on the alleys, at 10?
80%.
80, okay.
Of the surface costs.
Okay.
So that would be the...
80% of the surface.
If you can see in that number two there, it's the assessment policy is at 80%.
If, if, that's all I need to know, that 80% is definitely more than 20.
Yeah.
So as long as you assess for your policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you want to go back and reverse our assessment policy on this whole project, um, that is something that could be done, it just would be very difficult to do in such a timely fashion, and I wouldn't recommend it.
So I, I'm just, I'm just looking at how to move forward here, um, and I'm seeing a resolution here in the packet, um, to award the contract.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Okay.
Um, so this evening, there's, there's essentially three, uh, resolutions included in the packet. One, uh, which was revised today, and my apologies, is, um, it was a correction to get the lowest responsible bidder, uh, name to match what they had on their bidding. In my, in my memo, I erroneously referred to them as Omen Brothers, but they are in fact Omen Contracting Companies Incorporated. So the first action requested this evening for the council is to award the contract. And then the other two, um, resolutions included in the packet this evening, uh, revolve, uh, are directed towards the assessment portion of the project. So you would first have to declare the cost to be assessed and, and order the improvement. And in that resolution, you'll note that it, there are two blanks included in there because of the, knowing that there was going to be council discussion this evening as far as, uh, the amount to be assessed and the assessment methodology, that's why those are left blank for, for council discussion. And then the third resolution is to call for the assessment hearing, uh, based on whatever council direction is given with regards to assessments. So that's those, essentially, it's two actions, but three resolutions, uh, that go along with those two actions.
And I, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
And I guess that's what I was kind of trying to get at earlier, is, because I saw this in here, and this resolution declaring, declaring cost to be assessed, that, that isn't about just financing the project, correct?
It has nothing to do with financing the project.
Correct.
That's a whole separate deal.
So, when I asked my question earlier, I'm like, oh, well, we're not talking about that, we're just talking about financing the project, my, my response to that is, no, there's two other things in here that are not about financing the project, and they are about the, the amount that's gonna be assessed, and then declaring the public hearing for that. And so maybe I was getting ahead of myself, but I guess I was looking at this all, because it's all listed as one agenda item here, uh, in Old Business B, um, that, that I think is an important discussion, so.
And Councilmember Cook, I probably mistook what you asked, because at that point, we're looking, just when we were discussing the 680 and the 395, that's it, and yes, we are gonna talk about assessments tonight too, and that's what Allison's gonna talk to us about, if you have questions for her or anybody else.
Attorney Techen, do you have some?
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to comment to Councilmember Schultz's comment about amending the policy, and I don't have the special assessment policy in front of me right at the moment, and maybe Allison knows, uh, more off the top of her head, but there, there is an option to, to deviate from the policy, that's a council, within the council's discretion. Wouldn't require an amendment to the policy, but in any given project, if council believes there are, you know, unique circumstances, or it wishes to pursue a different methodology, the council has the discretion to do that, as long as you're doing it uniformly with, with all of the properties involved.
Uh, Mayor Poppy, thank you, uh, Attorney Techen, that's correct. My, I don't have the policy in front of me either, but, um, council may recall that, uh, with the street improvement project last year, there was a variation from what was in the policy. And so certainly that's the council's, um, authority to do so. Certainly we're looking for some direction from the council this evening with regards to assessments. If there's a question on what the policy states, we can certainly bring that back for the council to have at your fingertips for discussion and, and in giving direction on what those assessment amounts are, if that's how the council would like to proceed.
And, so I apologize if I kind of misspoke, um, yeah, I kind of always look at this stuff as an equity position, like, you know, what have we kind of always done? The last year's street project was a deviation from that, I didn't like that, um, I voted against that, um, because, um, for several reasons, but the reality of it is, is that it's always difficult for me to be like, okay, why are you making this deviation at this point in time? You know, I think the majority of the council deviated from that, that was their decision, and I can only speak what my preferences are in this case, um, we can do that, um, but if the conversation is to try to reduce the impact of the individual property owners, money's gotta come from someplace, so then we're back to bonding again.
And Mayor?
Yep.
I did actually find the policy online, thank you. Um, I can, you want me to read the section?
Sure.
If you'd like me to, it just says, "The, um, special assessment policy is to serve as a guide for systematic assessment process. Methodology shall be evaluated independently on each project to determine if any modicate, modifications need to be made. The council may adjust the amount of an assessment calculated for a property or properties to address unique features or circumstances of the property, or to more equitably distribute the assessable costs of a project, so long as the amount of the assessment does not exceed special benefit to the property."
So, Mr. Mayor, understanding these are three separate resolutions, just to kind of move it along a little bit, I'm gonna make a motion that council pass the resolution awarding the contract for the 2025 alley reconstruction project, which is just, we're picking Oz-Man.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the resolution awarding the contract for the 2025 alley reconstruction project, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Attorney Techen.
Thank you, Mayor, this is resolution number 19, Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Next, we'd need a motion declaring the cost to be assessed.
Well, I was, I, I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming before we can make this motion, we have to fill in these blanks.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cook, that's correct.
Yeah.
Um, and certainly, it, it's, the council may see fit, um, there are some costs, uh, outlined in table two of the council packet, which would have the total amount assessed and then the total city cost, um, included in those columns, and I can certainly assist the council with those numbers, um, if there's a, an assessment methodology that the council is leaning towards, or if there's another assessment methodology that the council would like staff to, uh, consider and do a quick calculation on.
And then, just a question out of that, preliminary assessments, didn't we discuss last time as leveling those out amongst?
That's correct. So, um, so included in that, um, in, in table two, it was assumed that each, each property would be the same assessment amount.
Yeah.
And then I also included the preliminary assessment amounts below that, just so that council could have that as you peruse your methodology on, on what was originally included in the feasibility report.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Your process question. Mr. Mayor, your process question. If we pass this resolution declaring what our intent is tonight, and then the next motion after that is to do the resolution for the
Public hearing.
Hearing on it. And if something comes up at the hearing and we decide, well, no, actually, good point, the motion before that, which is the resolution declaring costs to be assessed, can that be amended?
I'll take a stab at the question, but certainly look to Attorney Techen. My experience has been that the council, at, at an assessment hearing can certainly table action at that point. If they want to change that, you can assess less, not more than what was in the, the resolution.
Right, okay. And the, the purpose of that is to recognize Councilmember Cook's wanting to look further at, at the numbers. But I, again, I think, you know, in the spirit of trying to move this thing forward and not keep kicking the can down the road, I'm going to make a motion. Where's my little table at? I'm going to make a motion on the resolution declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments for the 2025 Alley Reconstruction Project, specifically the Section One. The portion of the cost of such improvements to be paid by the city is hereby declared to be, and I'll need a little help with this, I want to do the, in my motion, the assessment policy assessed eighty percent with the city portion, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. So is, are those the two numbers that go in there?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Torres, my experience has been that, that first, first blank in the resolution would be the total city cost, which would be the four ninety-nine, six ninety-six, because that includes the storm sewer. And then the second blank, that would be the total amount to be assessed, would be in, in the, Councilmember Torres, the, the option that you were looking at, the eighty percent assessed would be four eighty-five, three ninety-six point zero one. And then also understanding that if this is something that the council proceeds with, then the notifications would go out to the residents as such, based on that unit assessment stated in Table Two.
Thanks, Allison. I appreciate that. All right. So to continue on my motion, Section One, the portion of the cost of such improvement to be paid by the city is hereby declared to be four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the portion of the cost to be assessed against the benefited property owners is declared to be four hundred and eighty-five, three ninety-six. Did I get those numbers right, Allison?
No, the total city cost was different.
Yeah, the total city cost is the four ninety-nine, six ninety-six.
Correct.
Thirteen. Okay, so that number. And then, yeah, so that's that motion with the intent to move on to the next motion where we will fine tune that after the hearing.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve resolution declaring the cost to be assessed as discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion?
And just to alleviate anybody's, if I didn't communicate it well enough, it is again with the intent that we are going to have a fair public hearing to take in more information. But in order to get there, we need to start somewhere, and I think this is a good starting spot.
Mr. Mayor, can, can I just ask a, a quick, and maybe it's a budget question? So we are using this six hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we had from this previous bond to help finance this, this project. Was there money allocated in the 2025 budget for this project? No, okay. All right, that's all, that's all I wanted to know.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a quick reiteration too about municipal bonds. They're all over the place right now. Whatever we can do to try to avoid doing any new bond issues at this time, I think is in the city's best interest.
Okay, any further discussion? Attorney Techen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number Twenty, Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Nick.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes three to one. Now we need a res, or a motion to, for the public hearing.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep.
I was looking through my notes prior to coming to the evening, to the, to the council meeting this evening. And in my notes, so we have the, the resolution indicates calling the assessment hearing for May fourteenth, May twelfth, pardon me. And I believe Councilmember Schultz indicated he would not be at that meeting. I don't.
That's correct.
Okay. So Attorney Techen, I, are we still, we're not at a super majority with the assessment hearing, but with three council members present, are we still on good grounds to call an assessment hearing for that evening? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had that on the record.
Okay. Someone would like to make that motion?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for hearing on proposed assessments for the 2025 Alley Reconstruction Project. I think that's the right one.
Yep, we got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the resolution for hearing of the proposed assessments for the alley project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion?
Yeah, the only, since I won't be here on that particular day, the only other thing I'd like to leave the council with is, is that however you guys look at this assessment on that particular day, what it, if you decide to assess less, okay, what that does then is would put the, the remaining balance of that onto the general tax levy for subsequent years. That's just the nature of how that would go. So, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to potentially get back some of the different monies that was part of the original plan. But if we did that, then we then would be not only getting people for the original bond, but then we would be backfilling the remaining residential portion onto everybody else in the city through the general tax levy. That's what, that's what that would be if you guys at that meeting chose to reduce the assessments to the, to the properties. Just so you know, and so I won't be here to make that point. That's why I bring it up now.
Yep, no, good point. Any further discussion? Attorney Techen.
Thank you, Resolution Twenty-One, Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. All right, thank you, Allison. All right, ten, New Business, ten A, Approve Police Department Investigator Job Description and Internal Job Posting.
Mayor and council, the growth, or the, the growth of the Osseo Police Department, we recognize the need to expand our opportunities within the department. As of today, the department currently has eleven full-time sworn officers, which are divided between nine patrol officers. And to an administration, the department is currently in the process of recruiting two additional officers, which was approved by council earlier this year. This will bring our sworn strength to thirteen officers. We are proposing to have an internal process to create our first full-time investigator position. The investigator will primarily work Monday through Friday during the day, but will be on call evenings, holidays, and weekends as needed. Once fully staffed, the department has a police chief, a lieutenant, an investigator, and ten patrol officers. This was a discussion item that we've had kind of on our plate for the last two or three years. So it's not an added position. It's just we're reallocating resources within the department as far as what's been given to us in the last couple of years. With the addition of several new officers over the last few years, we've created a lot of caseloads, acquire more follow-up and resources, which have become a burden on the patrol officers. Many of the cases the officers deal with can tie them up for hours or days, which hampers their ability to be proactive and out in the community. Having a dedicated investigator would be beneficial service to the department. We also spoke about this with the, the position description at a council, at a work session in March. And so what we're asking from the council tonight is to, one, approve the job description, but then also approve an internal posting within the department. Our goal is to have this position up and running by June, sometime in June of this year, which we will take. Right now, we have two day shifts, two dog watch, and then a mid-shift car, one mid-shift car for both sides, and she works kind of a rotating shift. And what we would do is take out that mid-shift car for now until we get our new patrol officers out on the road. So that would be an investigator position within the department. With that, I just, part of that is negotiating also with the union because this is a union issue as far as pay and things like that, which, or I think I have a meeting with them coming up because the last one got canceled. And then there's also a vehicle that would be involved in this too because they need to have a separate vehicle to travel all over the state to do their investigations and to write warrants and do all of that. So we did put that in our CIP as far as having that additional vehicle. It's pretty much an off-the-shelf car, so it's not ninety thousand like our squad cars are. This would be something somewhere around thirty to thirty-two thousand dollars. And one of those things was I, I have a two thousand and thirteen, which we've been able to make work, and it still works, and I still like it, so I don't want it to go away. And that was one of the things that we were going to replace, but we're not going to. And we don't see this as a everyday patrol vehicle, so it's not going to be putting on thousands and thousands of miles. And I think we'll be able to keep it for quite some time. I mean, I think we put out a six-to-eight-year rotation for this vehicle in our, in our, in our CIP, but that is something that we've looked at already. So just to bring that forward. And so I'm open for questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. So this is what I think is a appropriate evolution of our department, of these resources. As was pointed out, we have our current patrol officers heading up most of these investigations. And while I think they're doing a really good job, I think some additional special training would benefit our residents. Even you have more people patrolling, they're catching more of this stuff. That's why our caseload is going up, is, is that we're actually seeing crime and we're getting on top of it, which is what we want to do. You know, so looking at this type of a situation, I think is great. It puts our patrol officers back on the street, spending more time, you know, not only, for lack of a better term, discouraging crime because we're more visible and more visibility decreases the desire of people to want to commit crimes. It'll never eliminate them because people are people. It's just the way they are. But, you know, we're not, I'm sure due to staffing or whatever else, I mean, we've had very limited access to Hennepin County Investigations, which, you know, was never great, but better than what it is now. And so I think this is a, I think this is a good natural evolution. And I think doing so would definitely be in the overall best interest of the public. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I think this goes along with what we've been talking about. I, you know, I read the job description. I think it makes complete sense. We've already talked about the need for this in the sense of approving, you know, moving forward with creating the job description. So I, I would like to make a motion to approve the job description for a full-time police investigator and internal posting.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the Police Department Investigator Job Description and Internal Job Posting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, ten B. Approve Public Works Office Furniture Purchase and Update to Office Space.
Mayor and council, I hope my items will be much simpler than what you pay. What I would like for you to consider is approving the purchase of new Public Works Office furniture. Public Works is due for new desk, file cabinets, flooring, and cabinetry. The current file cabinets and desktops have been repurposed multiple times, leaving them in a less desirable layout. They've also, it's also created holes in the walls, scattered bracketry for overhead file cabinets and nonusable space. Got some pictures around the current office for you to look at. The tile floor has been stained with asphalt oil and grease from its twenty-five years of life. We intend to remove the tile and install an epoxy floor. The cabinetry and countertops are falling apart, so we will remove, reconfigure, and install new. Alternative business furniture provided us with a proposal to do the office furniture. The, the contractor's been used, it's a reference from the police department, so we'll have similar furniture. The project's been discussed multiple times during past budget processes. It was, we were able to fit it into the 2025 budgeting process. So this purchase is a part, I already said that, part of the 2025 CIP. It equals out to about fifty-five hundred dollars in desks and file cabinets with the attached proposal, thirty-five hundred dollars in new flooring that we would get from Menards and do ourselves in-house, Public Works, twenty-five hundred dollars in cabinets, sink faucet, again, from, probably from Menards or a hardware store locally and installed by Public Works with a grand total of eleven thousand, five hundred. I guess with that, I would, is there any questions you would have?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
This is the easiest thing that we've had all night because it takes about four seconds to look at these pictures and realize that this is not a conducive working environment. So I am going to make a motion to approve the Public Works Office Furniture Purchase and Updates to the Office Space.
I got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the Public Works Office Furniture Purchase and Updates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just want to say thanks, Nick, and to all the crew. I mean, that's, that is just so cool to see that you guys are stepping up and do it yourself, right? I mean, that saves the city money. So that doesn't go unnoticed, and thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the only question that I have regarding this is talking about Public Works installing the sink and faucet and stuff like that. Is that something that, with our current code and inspections, that we're able to do? Since we're working with plumbing.
Question.
Is that something, because that would potentially change this? I mean, I just don't know the answer. That's why I'm asking the question.
I think it, I think they can. We would have to talk to our permitting just to see if that's something that they would inspect for us in the city. I can't, I mean, we've had many different things that, you know, they're doing repairs, you know, things like that. So I, I don't see why, as long as it follows code, that, and you're replacing, you're not putting in new, so we're not running a whole bunch of new pipes through the walls or anything. It would just be replacing the sink and connecting it and going on.
I just want to make, like, for example, you know, as a resident, you're allowed to do some of your own electrical because you own the house. I don't believe that there's any electrical reconfiguration that's been put out there for this. I just don't know what the code is like when it comes to plumbing. I mean, do people do it? Yeah, all the time. I just don't know the answer to the question. As long as it falls within our code, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, you know? And if for some reason this comes back, we can always come back to the council for an additional funding request if indeed that, that topic comes up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
What we, I'm, I'm guessing you might do is fill out an application for plumbing permit. And then once it's reviewed by Rum River, they then determine if that's something that falls under the criteria for needing, you know, more inspections and things like that, so.
And was inspection cost factored into this? And permit costs factored into this?
It was not.
So likely if we, if we do this tonight, likely we'll be having to add to this project. Probably a nominal amount, but.
Oh, with the motion, there was no cap on it. There was no, not to exceed. The motion was just to approve the Public Works Furniture and Purchase, the Updated Office Space. So there was no, not to exceed.
Semantics, but still, I mean, if it comes back and we're going to have to, we're going to have to account for it, and in the interest of what we've heard so many times, transparency, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Alicia, can, can you?
I was just going to look up.
Do you know what the cost of the permit would be?
Uh, that's, I'm just going to try to look up here, see if it's on our fee schedule.
Because I'm glad to amend the motion to include the permit.
I would imagine that those fees aren't going to exceed fifteen, fifteen hundred dollars.
No, I don't believe.
And maybe why Alicia's looking for that. Just one last comment. I do appreciate the approval on all this, and, and one of the things I didn't include is just some of the background. We've elected at Public Works to replace the equipment and our tools and stuff like that well before any of this office stuff. So this is kind of the last piece of the puzzle, so.
I mean, it'll be nice to go in there and not be able to sit in the chair that tips over if you lean too far back. I mean, I've been talking about this for quite some time, so I guess, you know.
Save that one for special visitors.
Yep, exactly right. So I, I would, you know, feel most comfortable. Yep, exactly right. Um, so I, I would, you know, feel most comfortable, just me, um, if we set a not to exceed of, let's say, fourteen thousand. That way we just, it's, it's out there, it's decided upon. And if we have additional spend, then we can come back and we can augment that by, you know, twenty-five hundred bucks or whatever it is.
Mr. Mayor, can I amend my motion?
Yes, you may.
So I would like to amend my motion, uh, to approve the purchase of Public Works Office Furniture and Building Updates not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so we have an amended motion by council member Cook to approve the Public Works Office Furniture Purchase and Updates not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. Council member Torres, would you second or amend your second to include?
I would, but I have one question first real quick.
Well, is it a yes or no? Then we can go to discussion.
Yeah, um, yes.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Torres has amended his. Now, now it's discussion.
Oh, sorry, I thought that was, um, for twenty-five or fewer drainage fixtures or units, it's a hundred and fifty.
So we've, we've got a little bit budgeted in there for cost overruns and that kind of stuff too, which I think is good. I mean, every single project we do, we include that.
Uh, and that's, I'm glad that you called that out, Councilman Schultz. That's a good, that was a good call out. Um, real quick, I remember when I first moved here, the city did this like big project where we had those, uh, we had those meters and stuff were replaced.
Water meters? Hmm, that was fun.
So, and you guys were an integral part of that, right? So couldn't that be used as precedent? When we go to Rum River and say, look at these guys obviously know what they're doing. They've done this kind of stuff before.
Just in the spirit of being transparent. Yep. We, we will replace meters at certain times. We did not, we were not hands-on with that project.
Yeah, that was, that was all contracted out to.
Well, if meters fail currently, we do go onsite and.
That's what I'm thinking of. Cause I had, yeah, I remember. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Nick. Can't wait to see the new, uh, dicks. All right, uh, ten C, approve agreement with Rainbow Tree Care for Emerald Ash Bore Treatment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the second easiest, uh, gen item for the night. I would like you to consider, uh, discuss contract with Rainbow Tree Care to provide preventative Emerald Ash Bore Treatment of the city's publicly owned ash trees. Rainbow would also agree to provide discounted treatments to privately owned ash trees. The same agreement was approved on April tenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. Uh, Rainbow Tree Care treated sixty owned ash trees in the road right of way and park properties throughout the summer season of twenty twenty-three. The injected treatment for ash borers performed on a bionic basis. The most effective means found so far to treat each endangered ash tree with a cocktail of insecticides. These insecticides are injected directly into the trunk of the ash tree to kill the larva, to kill the larva. Recent studies have found the treatment to be ninety-nine percent effective. A Minnetoka-based Rainbow Tree Care founded in nineteen seventy-six has been treating ash trees since two thousand four and has performed, has partnered with more than thirty-five metro cities to provide service to both public and private trees. Um, the total cost of treating a single tree is primarily based on its size, measured in terms of diameter at breast height. Um, some other financial considerations is, uh, included the duration of the treatment and regiment of the tree treatment. Each treatment provides two years worth of protection, but we cannot say with certainty how long this will be required. Um, other cities that we've contacted, um, have set aside enough funding predetermined for twenty years. Um, I think that's a little long myself, but this is presumably done with the idea that after a certain number of years, uh, the infestation will have burned through an area, making further treatment unnecessary. Or the second other affordable, more affordable or effective treatments will be available. Um, and the last consideration is the cost of not treating the ash tree population without treatment. It can be reliably predicted that the entire population of the ash tree, ash trees in Osseo will die and generally happens within one to three years of the infestation. Estimates caught, estimates on costs of a removal of a single tree can vary, but the same fourteen inch tree, for the example of the treatment, can commonly reach one thousand dollars for removal and an additional two hundred dollars for stump grinding, backfill, black dirt, seed, sod, that kind of thing. So at that rate, Rainbow Tree Care is proposing the same cost as thirty-eight years of preventative treatment for an existing tree. So, um, we're looking for the approval for the agreement with Rainbow Tree Care to provide preventative EAB treatments for in twenty twenty-five for four thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, twenty and twenty cents.
Mr. Mayor, I have a clarifying question. What was the thirty-eight years you just talked about?
Okay, so trying to ramble through that pretty fast to move, get things moving. So Rainbow, for that cost, right, a thousand dollars to remove a fourteen inch tree with two hundred dollars for stump grinding, removal, black dirt, seed or sod. They're saying that if you distributed that, that bulk cost to save that tree would cost you the twelve hundred dollars, or you could treat preventative treatment for, for thirty-eight years of treatment. So if you're treating the tree by, that would be fourteen treatment, or thirty-eight. Half thirty-eight, you're what? Nineteen?
Oh.
Nineteen, nineteen years of treatment. That's just an example of, of how basically you could choose to spend the money.
Well, another clarifying question. I believe this is the second year in a row that we've had to deal with this. Looking at other cities, they've been more proactive about basically committing to a multiple year type of a situation.
Okay.
Um, so I think looking at this for the two thousand twenty-five, I think makes some sense, but I would also like the council to entertain the concept with me of looking at what would this look like if we chose ten years? Or whatever. And then we put that into policy, committed that to being allocated for, um, down the road for whatever period of time that we did. That would not be an action this evening, but something we would come back to later. So just something that I'd ask for us to, to come back on agenda. I don't necessarily need head nods or anything like that. Just something that I mean, if, if you're in favor of that, just, you know, nod your head to the state administrator so he knows to bring it back. But um, in the meantime, I think it's definitely worth trying to save these trees. Um, you know, I think in the long run, if we just let them die, it's just going to cost a lot. The average homeowner, I, I had my tree treated last year, maybe the year before, and I think it was like two hundred bucks and I have a pretty good size. Um, ash in my front yard. So, you know, trying to do that and then also making sure that Rainbow, having this is continuing to offer partnership and discounts along with the remain, with the residents of the community to make sure that we can keep that there. To your point, if we only treat city trees, it's not ever going to burn out until all the trees die and get cut away. I'm not proponing, I'm not a proponent to say we need to pay for everybody's ash treatment, although if our intent is to save these, that's definitely something that could be considered.
I also have one other thing, Mayor and Council. With this agreement in the packet, um, as long as, or along with this treatment, when we partner with them to treat our trees, they will send out advertising citywide, uh, mailers and honor the same pricing that we have, that the city has. They'll offer that to the residents.
Um, what is that, like a dollar or something an inch or something like that?
Sure.
I saw it in here someplace. Well, if we're looking at.
Four thirty-five per inch.
Hmm, four thirty-five an inch. And make sure that they, they include that amount down there so, because people can figure that out themselves, but.
I guess my, my point to reiterate was, um, there would be a, there'd be a reach to the community and outreach to the community.
And I'm just asking that in the reach of the community that they disclose that number?
Pricing, yeah.
The pricing number. Not that I don't trust anybody, but I really don't trust a lot of people.
And with that, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor? I would like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Rainbow Tree Care to provide preventative EAB treatments in twenty twenty-five for four thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars, twenty cents, and would like to direct staff to look at um, seeing what type of deals we can get from Rainbow Tree on a long-term basis, along with what kind of deals we can get for the people of Osseo.
Second that.
Okay, got a motion by council member Torres as stated, signed by council member Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, ten D, approve elected official rules of procedure and code of conduct. Settle in, here we go.
Mayor and Council, this I think came to you as a, um, work session topic and we're looking at instituting a, um, elected officials' rules and procedures and a code of conduct, uh, for all elected officials. Um, I know, I'm gonna kind of turn this over to attorney Techen since she's been going through this with a fine-tooth comb, has some suggestions and some comments. And once we're through that, then we'll ask for some discussion. So I'm gonna turn this over to attorney Techen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you might recall from the last meeting, we talked about some of the comments that I had made on the policy. And I just prepared this memo, um, which, uh, sorry, it's late, um, which lists the, um, the areas of the policy as drafted that would depart from current practice of the city council. So looking for just some input on the items listed here from the council.
So, Mr. Mayor? I know we had, um, prior to the packet, we had received the various list of comments. Um, given the hour and given that there's more than just a couple, I'd like to make a motion to table this. Um, this is a very important thing that we need to do, but in the spirit of thinking about this with a very clear head, which I will be the first to admit at ten o'clock right now, I do not any longer have a super clear head. Um, I would make a motion that we table this until the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by council member Torres to ta, table the approved elected officials' rules and procedures. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Cook, non-debatable. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three to one. Ten E, approve council payable. Questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve the council payable?
I got a motion by council member Cook to approve the council payables. Are second?
Second.
Saying my council member Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, administrator report.
Uh, this isn't from the administrators, it's from the police chief. We are wa, wearing, as you can see with Lieutenant Kinsey. Uh, everyone is wearing their autism patch for this month. Um, we did have a breast cancer patch made and so when that comes around, we'll be wearing that. And, um, just wanted to kind of note that our officers are wearing those patches in recognition for the month. And then nothing else.
Okay. Assistant Administrator, Vicar Man.
Mayor and Council, um, I believe some of you wanted a short tour of the website. I'm happy to do that, but I want to be respectful of your time. If you don't have that in you, that's whatever your preference is.
Mr. Mayor? I'd love to see it. I know that there's been social media comments that are out there saying they can't find the agenda and they can't find the meetings and blah, blah. So I think that this would be a good use of our time.
Okay, water up.
All right.
Looking on the.
All right, here we are.
Meetings.
Homepage. We can go right over to, um, well, first we can go to watch meetings. Um, right on this main website is where you can go look and find, uh, the past meetings or if you want to pull them up right here, uh, that takes you straight over to CCX. And you can view um, council meetings, work sessions, EDA planning. Um, all the most recent meetings are on here and. Go back, um.
Look on the Osseo, it'll take you back to home.
Sure. Hey, look at you.
Figured that out today when I was trying to go back.
Well, sometimes the, uh, the browser settings, it doesn't clear the last thing you were in. So sometimes I just go in and clear it out. Um, but right here is where you find agendas and minutes. Um, we've also had some comments about archived agendas that people have been looking for and, um, in the past, our old website had just a massive back catalog and that's just not, um, really a good place for us to keep those. Um, we have, we obviously have, uh, requirements for how long we have to keep all of those, but we, um, we have the books that are available that, you know, anyone can do a data request and get those, but also part of the Laserfish um, program is all of those are going to be backlogged and be available digitally as well. So, um, just wanted to address that. Um, otherwise, just, uh, some differences in navigation and obviously you'll see there's just a lot less volume here, um, from our old, our old website. Um, of note, again, we were talking about this with, uh, Public Works. We'll get into the permits and licensings. Um, here's where we have all the links. This takes you straight over to Rum River to enter in, um, an application. So I'll just click over and here we are is, uh, building permits and rental licenses. Um, also soon to be added will be more, uh, electrical permits as well. And then. Um, same thing, utility billing. This takes you straight to where you have an account set up already to, to pay your bill or you can make one. Um, and you can either save your payment method or, um, just put it in each time, but either way that gets you straight to pay your utility bill. Um, same with city code. Just a quick redirect right over to the code library. So you can look up any, any city code you'd like to find. Um, I believe that's probably what Mary used to reference something earlier. I don't know, I'm guessing. She might have a special one, but, uh, also one of the other things I wanted to point out is that we didn't have on our old, old website just, um, more up and coming notifications, you know, possible quorum coming up, um, especially for the EDA breakfast. So all of those notifications, those public notices go right here to the website, right on the homepage.
Do they also go on the bulletin board upstairs?
Yes.
Cause I think we still, I think we still have to, I don't think the legislature has changed it to allow it to be only online, so it's gotta be duplicative.
Yep. So we'll still do it that way. I think part of the point and, um, the advantage of having it here is just even, even more, um, places for people to look. If they don't want to come walk up here and look on the wall, um, they can check right here. Otherwise, yeah, we'll, we'll still have those right out, right outside the, um, counter on City Hall. Um, same thing, just more dynamic, um, calendar options. Like if you want to check and see what's going on in the community center, um, you can just click over there and see everything that's scheduled. Um, and other item, well, we can go to the mayor and council page. Um, this also gets you another link to CCX, city code, um, and all of your information. And then there's also a better, just how do I search tool here. Um, so this is much more intuitive than anything we've had in the past. And one other good thing here is that there aren't a bunch of duplicate pages. So the, um, whether you search in your search bar up here or you're looking in the how do I menu or any way through here, it's all the same. It all leads you back to the same page instead of different versions of the same thing, um, like we had on, on our old website. So. Um, I understand it's, you know, it's still, it's still under construction. There, there are things that we change. I change something in here four times a day. Um, so we're trying to just make sure we update this as we go and we want to keep it, um, a little bit more dynamic and not so static where we just keep stacking more and more information on there. Um, we want to edit instead of add. So that's. We want to edit instead of add, so that's, that's kind of the philosophy we're trying to use in this going forward. Any questions, anything you want me to go to?
No, I think it looks great, like, like, you know, I don't know if anybody else did, but I recommended that we do this just based on stuff that's been out on social media and people having difficulty. Yes, it's new, um, but, um, it is, makes a lot of stuff here a lot more accessible, which is exactly what the whole premise behind this was. And again, compartmentalizing, no duplicate pages, you're not getting one thing over here and another thing over there, it's all the same, which is really important. And I just want to thank, um, I was going to say Councilmember, but Assistant City Administrator Vikerman, her and I were the people, you know, when she was elected, that really tried to push for dealing with this, because before that, it just kept getting kicked down the road, kicked down the road, kicked down the road, kicked down the road, and we just finally said it's enough, so thank you.
Yeah, then it is formatted for phone as well, yeah, it's not a smaller version of this.
Yep, yep.
At least, can I just ask a quick question? And I saw how you, you got, kind of got the stuff, but would it, would it make sense in the, in the government, mayor, mayor and city council tab to have, where on the left menu where it says mayor and city council, you have the city code, uh, mission, vision, state, value, state, watch, a link to the packets? Like packets and agendas as a, as a force?
I will check, but I know that there is.
I'm just thinking, as a, as a user, that's where I would go naturally.
Okay.
Versus the big agenda tab?
On the main page.
On the main page?
Well, I guess that's, that's the only thing I was going to ask, is that, there's a, right here is the agenda and minutes, and this is its own, um, searching tool, so I guess, we, and we can always link back over that, I can just get you a link that goes straight to this too, so.
Again, just.
And that's, that's great feedback, those are things that I'm looking for, like how does that make sense to you? And making sure we have these pathways, um.
Or just even move that tab more to the middle.
Yeah, and we can rearrange the tabs too, yeah.
So it stands out more.
Mm-hmm.
I think people probably just focus in the middle.
You know, honestly, when I first looked at it, I didn't even notice that tab, I, I, I just went right to government, because I'm like, oh, government, mayor, city council, there, go there, and then I'm like, oh, where are the, where are the agendas? And, and then, yeah, and then, so, again, you're in a hurry, you're, you're just, I, I don't know, that's just all my brain work, but.
We can, I can, I can put as, as many links as we need to.
Councilmember Schultz for pointing out the giant agenda.
That was the, that was the root of this whole thing here, which is like, can't find it, literally.
Mr. Mayor, so I want to thank you, Assistant City Administrator Vikerman, this is fabulous. I was a huge critic when I first saw it, because change is difficult sometimes, and I was used to what I used to see, and I was like, oh, this thing doesn't look as good, and it's all kind of blocky, and, and then after navigating it, I love it, it is so much easier to get around, things are a nice big bold print, and, yeah, it's, it's just great job, that's all I can say, great job.
Yeah, I would say switch the agenda and city code tabs.
Sure, we can do that.
That's dead center, and people are going to go to those more than they're going to probably to the code.
I, I don't even know that we necessarily need a city code right there too, do we? It has to stay right there, okay, all right.
I have to tell you, it was one of my huge pet peeves with your former website, like had to search city code, put it into the search bar, find it, because there was no way to get to it.
Oh, well, we'll leave it there.
And, and so was agendas and packets was under council before, so that's where everybody seemed, I think that's where that comes from. I'm going to go.
But yeah, if agenda and minutes was right next to watch meeting videos, I think for people, I'd be like, oh, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
That, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Since we're giving feedback. The only thing that I didn't see when you flipped through things was a link to our twenty forty comprehensive plan?
That is, let me get there.
That's about the only good thing I found.
I know right where to get to that, I think it's right here.
I had zoning, right there.
Planning and zoning.
I'm just saying.
Intuitively.
Yep, there's your.
If we're going to rearrange tabs, I'm going to bet my opinion.
No, please let this Adobe pull up, okay, there it is, so, under planning.
I want everybody to know it's www.oseo mn.gov, right, isn't that the website?
And discover is dropped.
Yes, but it's still auto-forwarding over.
Yes, and, and Google is slowly learning. The more often you check it, that was one of the things, I was like, why is Google not automatically taking over and putting .gov at the top, while apparently there, it takes a while for Google to learn what we are actually looking for when you Google that, and the more times people do it, the higher up it gets, so.
But do we still have that domain name, the discover Osseo, and that's going to continue to link to even to this site?
Yeah, we still have ownership of that domain, and it's auto-forwarded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only decision we have to make at some point in time is when do we stop paying for that? Because auto-forward doesn't cost anything, but the domain name does.
And we've been doing that with emails, and we usually do it for a year, where we just auto-forward for a year, and then after that, everybody kind of gets it.
That's what we've been doing, and by then, Google will have all that figured out, for the most part.
Yeah, okay, anything else?
That's all I've got, unless you have any other things you want me to look for.
Anyone?
I spoke enough tonight.
Well, it wasn't your turn anyway, so. It's Attorney Techen's turn to have a lengthy, uh.
No, I have no report.
No report? Now it's your turn, Councilmember Torres.
Nope, 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 not to say.
Councilmember Cook?
I just, again, thank you to everybody who put on the Easter egg hunt this last weekend, it was, it was, I, I mean, I unfortunately couldn't be there, but I heard it was amazing. EDA breakfast tomorrow morning, for those that, you know.
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, sorry, Thursday morning, Thursday morning, uh, it feels like it's Wednesday already.
Technically is, I'm not.
Thursday, Thursday morning, uh, EDA breakfast, so, uh, hopefully see a lot of people there. And then just, you know, I, I want to just take a second to just, uh, you know, apologize and, and ask for a little grace on our, as I'm learning this whole process and the public hearings and, and, and public comments, and our, when we're supposed to talk and when we're not supposed to talk, and when we're supposed to listen. And so, uh, you know, I, I apologize for that, but it was, uh, it's a learning experience, and we continue to grow and learn as we go through this, so, that's all I got.
Councilmember Schultz?
So, just a couple of things came up, um, this was a tough meeting, I mean, when we have to deal with tough, we have to deal with tough issues, it's kind of sucks a little bit, more than a little, actually. But unfortunately, that's what we have to do, deal with, you know, the whole CUP discussion, what could have been very easily, um, avoided if people just worked with city staff and, and whatever, so there's that. I also wanted to explain, um, just really briefly, my opposition to the table of the code of conduct. Basically, the fact of the matter, we've had this document for several weeks, it's not going to get any easier to talk about it. I've been up since five-thirty this morning, I'm tired too, but, um, I just think that, I'm not a fan of kicking stuff down the curb that we've had time to deal with, just because we don't want to get into it. So that was my resistance there. I want to thank city staff once again for all the work on the website. I think hundreds of hours is understated, the amount of time that went into this. I would imagine it's got to be at least triple digit by the time you add everybody up by now, so that's really good. Really great, um, opportunity to work together with everybody, um, up here, as always, bringing forward different, different ideas, different, different concepts, and really trying to get to what's best for the entire community. And making some of those decisions, um, when it comes to a few versus the many, is always very difficult and very hard on all of us, and so, um, I just appreciate everybody weeding through all this stuff tonight and just, our, be able to, our cohesiveness working together has, has been very valuable to me, so, with that, I pass.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of announcements here, obviously, as mentioned, the EDA breakfast, business breakfast on Thursday, four seventeen, at seven-thirty to nine at the Osseo Community Center, so we've got a good attendance coming for that, but I was looking for any additional businesses, well, I want to swing up. Public Works Spring Cleanup Event is on four, Saturday, four twenty-six, from eight AM until noon, so make sure you're there before noon. And then movies and music in the park for the twenty-five city event schedule will be included in the next utility billing statement, so look for those, and more, uh, exciting, uh, movies and music, as always, and then the farmer's market will start later in the summer. And with that, moving on to fourteen, adjourned.
Most due adjourned.
Yeah, motion by Councilmember Schultz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook.
Nick doesn't want to ladies, wants to chit chat over there.
Non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes four to zero, we're adjourned at ten nineteen.